All right, finally, God gave planning is to find the slow sign and check out. It's when I go in the garden, there you click. The other day, first, I told you when that was pure four.
Right.
I got mine. I'll be about to lose it.
Right away.
And I'm standing behind the post. You have to be.
All right, ready, guys? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February sixth, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting. Clerk, may we take the call of order, please?
Chairman McGee, Chairman McGee is absent. Vice Chairman Hauser.
Present.
Secretary Sage.
Here.
Mayor Bixson.
Here.
Commissioner Gasson, absent. Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Lord.
Here.
Commissioner Kenjuk.
Here.
Commissioner Stone.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next agenda item this evening is public comment. Now, I will just ask that we keep the public comment in this particular component of the agenda to anything that's not on the agenda already. So if there's anything that's not on the agenda that the public would like to discuss, please step up to the lectern. Okay, we'll go to number four, approval of the minutes. Consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of January third, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mr. Mayor. Second?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Sage. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Secretary Sage?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Lord?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenjuk?
Yep.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on, item number five, public hearing. This is for Cruck Cards, two ten Campbell Street. This is going to be a continued discussion to determine if the request is ready to set a public hearing if appropriate.
So actually, bad wording on there, Mr. Chairman, sorry. It, this is the public hearing, we said it last.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think it just got cut and paste from a previous.
Sure.
Item, so this is the public hearing.
Okay, this will be the public hearing. Vidya?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
I will share my screen with the site plan on it. The request before you tonight is from Design House Architects on behalf of George Krip to seek approval for a proposed warehouse storage use within an existing industrial building. The site is about two point four one acres located at the south end of Campbell and Fraser Streets and is Zoned I two Industrial Two District. The applicant has been before the Planning Commission numerous times over the past several months in order to fix issues on the site. They last appeared before you at your January third meeting and were scheduled for a public hearing and action tonight. With regard to the use, the use is a warehouse. The building is also occupied by a kennel, a dog kennel. The warehouse and storage use is a principal permitted use and also a special exception used in this district. Since the ordinance does not make a distinction upon the two types of uses, this use is being classified at this time as a principal permitted warehouse use but subject to the standards for outdoor storage. With regard to setbacks, the building is nonconforming with respect to the rear yard setbacks that abut the Pink Creek Trail. That is because there was a railroad at one point of time that serviced this building, and once the railroad was abandoned, the building was built closer to the railroad in order for the industrial functions of the building. So this is an existing legal nonconforming structure that is not being altered at this time. With regard to circulation, the site has two means of access in and out of it. This is to Fraser Street and on the east side is through Campbell Street. Both are two-way circulation drives. The aisles within the site have also been modified in order to provide adequate room for two-way movement of vehicles. The main drive aisle on the north side of the building is now designated as a fire lane, and no parking or storage is permitted within this area. The site does not have actual frontage on a public street, so there are no public sidewalks required on the building. Based upon the ordinance standards for parking, a total of twenty-six parking spaces are required for the warehouse use and the dog kennel use. A total of twenty-seven parking spaces, including two handicap accessible spaces that are shown right next to the building entrance, have been provided. Last time the applicant was before you in January, there was some discussion about the dumpster, and the applicant has angled the dumpster in order for it to be accessed more easily. The ordinance requires that the dumpster enclosure must be constructed of a material to match the building, which in this case would be a block material. The enclosure proposed at this time is chain linked with slats. This recommendation was in my previous letter, too, and the applicant did not object to it at the January meeting, and the Planning Commission did not remove the requirement. So at this time, we will continue with the recommendation that the enclosure must be constructed of masonry, and the gates can be chain linked with slats as allowable under the ordinance. All of the wall-mounted fixtures on the building will be replaced with downward directed and fully shielded fixtures. Manufacturers' cut sheet details have been submitted, and they meet the ordinance standards. The biggest issue with regard to the site was screening for the residential properties that are located to the north of the site. The issue was the storage of containers along the north property line. The applicant was asked, these are not considered as permanent storage containers based upon the information provided by the applicant. They are designated as trailers that can move in and out of the site, as a result of which they are shown in designated parking spots, which is allowed under the I two Industrial District. Previously, the applicant had shown a full row of evergreen trees, dense evergreen trees along the entire north property line to screen the residences. At the last meeting, one of the residents showed up noting her concern. I believe she was at this home or this home. She had expressed concern that installing these new trees would disturb the root system of established large trees that are already over there and cause them to actually come down. So the Planning Commission directed the applicant to fill in all the gaps in the existing vegetation along the north property line to create a screen as required without disturbing the root system of the existing established trees. So at this point of time, you see there is a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees throughout the north property line. The reason a screen wall cannot be installed is because of the great difference. The maximum permitted screen wall height is six feet. It would really serve no purpose at all because the screen wall would be lower than the residences located to the north. So the landscape, the ordinance allows the Planning Commission to substitute the screen wall with landscape screening, which is what the applicant is doing at this time. There are no changes proposed to the building architecture. It is painted relatively recently in a green color. Any signage on the building needs to be submitted to the administration prior to installation. The final item of consideration was open storage or outdoor storage. Now, all of the materials that are permanently stored on the site have to be inside the building. The applicant is also using these trailers as storage containers. However, they have submitted truck turning diagrams to show that these are not permanent fixtures on the site and will be moved in and out of the site. The site plan also notes an eight-foot-tall chain-linked fence with slats along this property line over here to help screen all these storage containers from the newer residential property to the east. At this time, the applicant, I believe, has worked with the city for the past six or more months in order to address the numerous concerns that were raised. It is our recommendation that the Planning Commission grant site plan approval to Cruck Cards to be located at two ten Campbell Street, subject to the installation of a masonry enclosure for the dumpster. I would be happy to answer any questions the commission might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner?
I guess this is actually more for Mr. Banda. You were, at the result of the last meeting, were going to go out and meet with the resident and selectively figure out where you're going to plant some new trees. Did that happen?
No, we decided she wanted to wait till we got, we, I'm sorry, we wanted to wait until we knew if this was approved or not. So I would go, as a condition, I would go on the, a condition of the approval would be that we agree together where they would go.
Okay, this has subsequently received letters from, and it's not clear if these are people that are both living at two fourteen Fraser or if they're the next-door neighbors, but they showed some pictures in the past where there were some trees, and it's not clear to me whether or not on this drawing those are going to be planted or if those are existing trees. And I have some, like, follow-up questions regarding, like, the pictures because she shows, like, a wooden fence, and it's not clear whether or not that's on the property line or from this view whether or not that dumpster is going to be moved or if it's going to be hidden by the masonry. But it seems like this person at two fourteen Fraser, their biggest concerns is that some trees be planted that were cut down in the past and that they no longer have to stare at the dumpster from their family room window.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
So Darrell's here tonight?
Yeah. Okay, good.
They can, they can fill you in on all of it, but there were, over the years, there were cottonwood trees, there are all kinds of different trees on that island right there that aren't there anymore. But this plant is not showing anything else being planted there. I think the concept, and the architect can talk about it, but up at the top, you can see where it does look like there's some new trees by the driveway coming in. But again, I'm not sure which window they're looking out to see the dumpster, but it would be enclosed in an enclosure, so, I mean, it would be screened in an enclosure. So I don't think you can get trees there. It's very, there's asphalt. The trees didn't make it there for a reason, is what I'm trying to say, sorry. So I'm not sure what the Darrells, which, what they're trying to accomplish there. I'm not sure what the architect, he did not show any additional screening there, so maybe they can answer that for us.
Any further questions?
No.
Okay. Anyone else? I, I have a question for you, Mr. Banda. So when Vidya was talking, she had indicated that these trailers that are on-site are going to be used as trailers and not as storage, is that correct? And she also indicated that they're going to be moved in and out of the property. My concern is that it's going to be said that they're going to be moved in and out, but they may be permanent fixtures there under the guise of, hey, they're trailers, but they stay there. Can the city do anything to make sure that they actually do go in and out? And if they don't go in and out over a certain amount of time, is there a violation? Is there some type of citation? How does the city handle a situation where the applicant says, oh, these trailers are going to go in and out, and thirty days later, they're sitting there, they haven't moved, or sixty days later, they haven't moved? That's, candidly, that's my concern.
Right, and I would say that, I know what Vidya said, but everything that I know from Mr. Cruck is they're not going anywhere. They have tires that are painted green.
Right.
Those are just there, but they're in a parking spot, so they're legit to be there in a parking spot forever because that's, that's the way the ordinance is written. So I don't think they're going anywhere. That Mr. Cruck bought those and uses them or uses them for permanent storage, and instead of building a new building, he's using those. But they could be moved because they're still, it's a trailer, but they're painted green with green tires. So I, I wouldn't purport that they're going anywhere. He can answer that.
Oh, I'll ask him in just a moment, yes. So I guess I'll ask, Mr. Cruck?
Yes.
You heard my question?
I did, yep.
And the representation was that these are not going to be used as permanent storage, but rather are going to be utilized as trailers, their intended purpose moving in and out. Is it your representation that these are, in fact, going to be used as trailers, and we will see them going in and out of this property?
They will be permanent storage.
They're permanent storage.
Yes, I mean, they, they have the ability to move in and out.
Right.
Because they're trailers, so they can be moved in and out.
I understand that.
For the most part, they're probably going to be there for a while.
And how long is a while?
They've been there for a couple of years, they'll probably be there for many more years.
Okay. Okay. If, applicant, if you want to go further and do your presentation, that's certainly fine.
I believe we, what we did is Vidya had asked us to go ahead and rotate the dumpster. We've done that. We thinned out some of the trees to make Stephanie happy with, we don't want to go ahead and kill that one big oak tree that she thinks is, you know, supporting her house and create, creating, I guess, some sort of, you know, stable, stabilization for the hill. So we've done what you guys have asked, I believe, and we're just here to see what the next step is. I've go, I've also gone ahead and I've gone to my other, my neighbors on, I've gone to five of my neighbors, got, I've got, I got a letter from five neighbors saying that I don't create trouble. I'm there to just do my business. I, I'm very considerate of my neighbors. They, they said in this letter here that they would not need me to, to clear the underbrush and plant more trees, and I've got five signed letters from five neighbors, if you'd like to see those.
Have they been submitted to the city?
No.
If you've given them to Mr. Maud, please. And while you're doing that, Commissioner Lord, did you have a question?
Just regarding the dumpster, is there acknowledgement that that's, I think the plans don't show it as a masonry enclosure on the dumpster?
That was Mike Pizzola, Design House Architecture, thirty-three in Auburn Hills, Auburn Road, Auburn Hills, Michigan. That was intended to be fully enclosed by the chain link and slats. It's been done before in, in commercial districts. The adjacent multifamily apartment building has the exact same enclosure we're asking for. So we don't think it's above and beyond what should be proposed by the applicant.
Mr. Chairperson?
Yes.
Go ahead, Vidya.
Go ahead, Vidya.
An existing nonconformity on a next-door site is no reason to build a new nonconformity. The apartment complex next door is not seeking site plan approval at this time. The applicant is. The ordinance requires a masonry enclosure, and the applicant is making other improvements to the site. There is absolutely no reason or justification to not put in the masonry enclosure as required by the ordinance.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions?
I want to, one question and one confirmation. So the picture that was submitted by the neighbor at two fourteen Fraser, the second photo there that shows the dumpster, that dumpster is going to be turned, right? So it's going to face into the property?
Vidya, can you pull that site plan back up?
Because it didn't appear from the site plan.
It's on an angle, it's not towards them, but it's angled that way. Northeast, and I think.
Where's, where's the opening?
Um, right, sure, yeah. No, the opening to the gates, Vidya.
Yeah, this is where the gate starts, where the solid dash line ends, and it goes up to here. So this is the opening, which they probably can view from this angle. But if there is a masonry enclosure, it'll probably provide them with better screening.
Is she me, I think.
Where's the masonry enclosure going to be?
Yeah, can you, right there, and the gates face that.
If you would see my cursor, three sides of it.
That's the dumpster.
Okay, based on this picture, it doesn't appear to be angled that way, but we're saying it's turning. So this is an update on the site plan?
Yes.
Yeah, today, it's not right. They're going to change it to that.
Okay.
Yes.
And then there is a fence currently along the west property line. It says, existing opaque fence. Based on the photos I've seen here, it looks like that fence is possibly falling over.
That was, that was set by my neighbor, my neighbor Jason Knapp. And you could see the property line there. The Darrells touched Jason Knapp's property over there to the, to their south, and then they see my property just to the east. So that fence, fence was put up by Jason back, you know, a number of years ago.
But it's on your property, correct?
Yeah, it's on our, yeah.
So would we not require them to fix a dilapidated fence that's on their property?
Or remove it. I mean, it's, it'd be a code situation, this is the first time I had heard of that.
Yeah.
Could we make that a condition?
Would that be a similar use?
It might be from the picture, but.
It wouldn't be required between industrial properties, I don't think it would be required.
You could take it down, it's not required, right?
We'll take it down. If you wish.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know that taking it down will make the neighbors happier, but I just wanted to point out, it looked like it was falling over.
I believe this would be a code enforcement issue. The person who owns the fence would probably have to coordinate with the owner of this property in order to repair the fence and get it up. I would definitely suggest that code enforcement look into it rather than have it as a site plan issue.
Mr. Mayor, you said you had a question?
Yeah, for the city manager. So the, the way there were, this is being, think, worded is that the city's good with this because these are not permanent things that they can move the trailers out. Is that what we're saying?
I, I don't, we didn't say we're good with it. It's, Vidya, Vidya, you defend what you wrote. So my.
Actually, I want to provide a clarification, if I could, Mr. Mayor. When I originally reviewed the site plan, the preliminary review of this project was done in a letter dated August twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. I had clearly noted to the applicant that they cannot use these trailers as permanent structures that are seated on the ground because you're technically, instead of building an addition to your building, you're using the trailers as an addition, which is not permitted. The applicant came back with a revised site plan, calling these trailers that can move in and out of the site, and submitted truck turning diagrams showing that each one of these spaces is navigable in and out. I'm surprised that tonight at the meeting, it is being said that these structures are going to be sitting there permanently. That was not what was presented to me before.
So that was my question was, he just admitted that they're not going to move them.
So, so.
Whatever you want to do.
So.
Oh, my side, okay.
Thank you, I'm, I'm allowed to speak. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I can help.
To me, this is, again, this is back to where we were, that this is a way around it.
Right.
You could, you could surmise that, and then we had to go to, the city had to go to court to get this far. So.
Correct, so Mr. Mayor, to directly answer your question, so staff does not like this. I think you should build a permanent building. Vidya did her job, found a way, he found a way, a loophole to say, that's a parking spot, they can stay there forever. But staff does not like this. We, we don't want those there. The Darrells have been looking at this, now that you just moved them, that's all. And I, I understand there's a loophole in the ordinance that said, put a parking spot, it's legal, Vidya is a hundred percent correct. That's not, our intention when we went to court was get them off the site, go store them in a yard someplace. Why, it's not made for that. That, that was our intention, so.
Does anyone else have any comments, because I want to add something? No?
I have one.
Go ahead, please.
So is this the fourth or fifth time we've actually considered something from this applicant? And my only question being, it just, we never get to a resolution. We're always going to some other, just another different path. So I, I guess I'm reluctant.
Well, if I may also, I'm, I feel like we've been misled, and I, the reason I ask those questions is because I saw where this was going, and I saw specifically that these trailers, you were calling them trailers, they are trailers, but the intended purpose, frankly, was that they were going to sit there forever.
But it's not a, but it's allowed.
I, I understand it's allowed, but we also have to look at the intent. And I look at this as a little bit of a misrepresentation on your part in saying, hey, we're going to use them as trailers, but they're not going to go anywhere. So that's the real problem I have. I feel as though it's, 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 we've been duped here a little bit, okay? And I'm trying to understand.
I didn't, that was not my intention to dupe you at all.
Well, when we, back here in August, it was. You were saying, we can't use these as permanent storage, and you conceded that these aren't going anywhere.
Peter always said that this was going to be permanent storage. It's not a permanent structure, it's permanent storage, which is allowed, I believe, under the ordinance of the City of Rochester.
I guess, yes, please, go ahead, Mr. Banda, I'm sorry.
I'll try one more thing, George, I'm sorry, but it says, required parking twenty-six, twenty-seven Friday. How can they be parking if they're staying there forever? That's not what a parking space is.
And, and that's my whole point.
So it is a dupe, I'm sorry.
Yeah, parking to me seems, spaces become available over time, you know? If, if I'm going to go park my car on the parking deck forever, that's not how it works. Sooner or later, I have to take my car out. So I, I'm not, I'm not buying the argument that this is somehow fits within the ordinance and the intent and the spirit of it. I, I, personally, I don't see it. I'll let everyone else make their own minds, but that's my position.
I was going to say, for, for me, we're just, I need to understand the requirements of the ordinance. You know, we're bound by that. So if they're meeting the requirements of the ordinance, then it takes discretion out of our.
Okay, but, but a parking space is a parking space, not a storage space.
That's what I was going to say.
Those are taking up the required parking. They're not available to park in. So how can, by him admitting they're going to stay there forever, he took them away out of it. Vidya, would you agree? They're not parking spaces anymore.
I agree with that. I, I guess if it's possible, Mr. Crack, city attorney, do you have any opinion on this one way or the other, or some guidance? No, lawyer to lawyer, please, yeah.
So, so I, I understand both, both situations. I mean, it, it's tough because with the stated that this is going to be a permanent storage situation, that would require him to comply with the outside storage requirements, which is to be contained or enclosed. They are on wheels, and they are movable, and if they, because I, I know from previous meetings that if they were moving or movable, I don't remember the, the words, which are now becoming more important, if they're in a legitimate parking space, that makes it a little harder to prohibit that. Certainly, the intent is, is not in and out, then that's a, that's a judgment call and one that, I, I don't, I don't know how to guide you other than if it's a parking spot and they're legitimate parking vehicles in a parking spot. I mean, there's other areas that have it, but those are, I would say, are moving in and out in other areas of the city versus staying, you know, lined up, you know, seven in a row.
Can you show me, I didn't mean to interrupt you, could you show me, Vidya, where the other parking spots are on that site? So if people wanted to come in and do business there or visit where they would park?
And the parking spot's nine by twenty, not nine by forty. So how can that be, that's not a spot, that's a loading zone.
Right.
That person, Hauser, if I may just read out a sentence from my review letter that was originally done for this project dated August twenty-first of twenty twenty-two. I clearly wrote in my letter, if the trailers are to be an integral part of the onsite warehousing operations, the trailers must be clearly placed in designated and striped parking spaces. Such parking must comply with applicable setbacks. If the trailers are to be permanent fixtures, they are not permitted without a foundation, architectural plan, and compliance to building code. This was my first review letter done in August of twenty twenty-two.
Right, and I remember that.
I need this, so it was made clear in the beginning that this is not intended as a way around the ordinance to keep permanent storage. There is no point in requiring truck turning diagrams and truck turning templates if the trailers are going nowhere.
Right.
We can move them then.
I think initially, though, it come, they had, um, storage units as well, not just trailers, right? Or are there still storage units, or are they all trailers on wheels?
There's storage units there, too, on the other side, isn't there?
They're containers.
Containers, yeah.
They're containers, so they don't have wheels? Oh, but they can be picked up?
They can be picked up.
But those would need a foundation, though, correct?
They're removable.
I see, I also see twenty-three parking spaces.
All the trailers are movable on-site. And they can be moved at six months, twelve months, a year?
I'm going to have to go ahead and move the trailers the way they sit right now. I'm going to have to move the trailers into the positions that are required on the site. So they will be moved. Can I chalk the tires or what?
All right.
And then never moved again.
Yeah.
To me, this, this requires a variance for parking. I just, you know, the ordinance requires a certain number of parking spaces based on the use, and when you calculate that out, it requires, what, twenty-six spaces? Of those twenty-six spix, twenty-six spaces, you have permanent trailers that are occupying those, those areas. So they're not available to people that would use the facility on a regular basis.
For our, for our proposed use, we meet the minimum parking requirements. If the use were ever to change, the parking requirements would change, the trailers would be, go away. Talk about now.
I, I see ten parking spaces, possibly eleven.
We've got enough, don't we, Mike? There's, there's twenty-six there, right?
There's, there's parallel spaces on north site.
There's eight there. Then there's four up against the building.
Of those are counted as parking.
Drag it down, there's someone on the other side. Can you drag up that site plan, Vidya?
Yeah.
So he's counting those down there, too.
Nine, eleven spaces here. Eleven and eight, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Right.
And then some of the other spaces.
All right. Is there anyone like to make a public comment on this?
So, it's going to need to open up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. Any other questions then, from the commissioners to the applicant?
So, can I ask one more question to the attorney? So, when we had to go to court against the applicant, did the court rule that they had to move these out?
No, so the, the court, the, the way the court ended up is, they, they were issued a citation for, by with approved site plan. Essentially, what's there now doesn't meet their approved site plan. So, after a lot of discussion, we ended up with an agreement, essentially a consent judgment, which said that they need to either go back to the city and get approval for something, right? Their approved site plan, a new site plan, which they would comply with, or if they didn't, then they had to revert back to the approved site plan. So, it was essentially up to them to seek, and which is why they're here now, is to seek a, a new site plan, which anybody can do at any time. So, the court didn't have to make a decision. It's either they get something new approved by this body and they comply with it, or if there's, or not, then they have to revert back to the original, excuse me, the current site plan.
Right. Thank you. And that's the court order dated, looks like September 6th, 2022.
That's correct.
Yeah. All right, this time, let's open it up to public comment. It is 7:31. Are there any public members who would like to comment on this? Sir, in the back, please, come up to the lectern.
Hello, my name is Dave Pettit, and I live at 214 Fraser. And this is drug on too long, and he's shipping containers of metal. And it's going to rust out. He doesn't take care of his property around there. And I wish you could have him move the dumpster to the east side of the building, instead of the west side, because I'm looking at it, I've got two windows that look right out to it. And there's pallets laying all over the place, and if he wants to put that around, this dumpster on the other end, that's, that's up to him. And then on that loading dock, when it rains over there, it floods. And then, nobody's ever taken, taken that consideration. And it, the water stays there for days. And then if he's going to put shipping, just the shipping containers in there, it's going to rot everything out. And I was, which, I don't care if he puts trailers on there, they're made out of aluminum. But these shipping containers look like crap, you know? And he just, he just brought them in, just threw them down, thought everything was okay, and it's not. We live there, and it's just, it just, it's bad, it looks bad down there right now. I just wish you would say that, you know, I can't do anything about the trailers, we bought those in. But, you know, these shipping containers have to go.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Yeah, any questions? No? Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else on public comment? Okay, it's 7:33, I'm going to close the public comment. Yeah, commissioners, I guess, take a vote here, and make a motion, whatever you want to do.
Well, can I say a couple things?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I treat my property well, and I don't let this, this stuff's not going to rust out. These are containers that are solid metal containers, they're painted, it's all painted green, it looks like it's trying to blend in with the whole area and with the vegetation. It's, it's, it's well-maintained. If, if there's holes in these containers, then sports cards get ruined and they get wet. And I, do you think I want that to happen? So, the stuff is, it's maintained. I just wanted to say that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'm, I'm still at a loss for the parking situation on whether or not we're able to approve.
Right.
A site plan if, if it's deficient in parking.
We have 26 spaces, don't we, Mike?
Can we zoom in on the parking calculations of the chart? It's not deficient at all, but based on our use.
Do you, do you, you have the required parking here outside of the trailers?
It's on the site, Vidya, it's on the site plan, and Vidya would review it for the fourth time.
May, may I speak? Yes, there are 26, 27 parking spaces excluding the trailer spaces on the site.
Okay.
Commissioner, so there are 11 here, there are four here, the striping is not drawn, but there are four here, it was drawn on previous plan. There are eight here, and there are four here. That equals 27 spaces. So, they do meet the letter of the ordinance.
Okay.
I, I think I struggle with the fact that these are not parking spaces, right? If they were parking spaces, they would be movable.
She's saying outside of?
No, the trailers. Like, if we're not calling those, those haven't been designated as parking spaces according to what we're asked to approve here. And so, if they're not parking spaces, that leads me to believe they're permanent storage.
Yeah, Vidya, can you do that again? Where are you counting the 26 at?
Which goes against.
Bring it up, so we can see, we can't see it. Just go one at a time. Oh, they're down at the bottom there?
Okay, here, okay. There are 11 spaces up here, near where the dock kennel is.
Can you scroll up? Vidya, can you scroll the screen up just a little bit? Yes, thank you very much.
That's a loading dock.
It's, it's not on this drawing, you have to go to the next page.
That's a loading dock that drops off in the back. There's no wheel stops or anything? Well, I don't see how they get to count those as spaces, the ones at the bottom there. You have to drive up a ramp.
They have a reading shown here, so they're calling this 11, Nick. Four spaces here, the striping was shown on the previous, not on this, but there are four spaces designated here. There are eight parallel parking spaces shown along the north property line, and there are four spaces shown on the east side of the building, 1, 2, 3, and 4. So, 4 plus 8 plus 4 plus 11.
George, isn't that a ramp that you go up to, and then it drops off? It's elevator, right?
No, it's not elevator, not up there. You, you take a ramp to get up there on the, on the north end, and then it's all great level.
Great, great meets.
It's all great level.
Okay. Sorry.
Just don't leave comments.
Excuse me, if it helps move things along, the applicant would be willing to move the dumpster to the east end of the property in the enclosure, if that helps anything.
Does that just move it from one neighbor to the next? I don't know.
The neighbors on the, everybody else is happy. Everybody else on Hill Street and Fraser Street, they're all, they're not even complaining.
There's better screening from that, that, that perspective. To the way right, there'll be that eight-foot chain link fence with the slats, so you could take it right over there, yeah? It would be a significant improvement.
With a masonry enclosure, correct?
Have to.
Yeah.
For the ordinance.
With the cha, with the slap front, yes.
No, previously you said you would not do the masonry, so.
We'll do the masonry. Absolutely do the masonry.
I think, you know, although we may not like it, I'm not hearing much ammunition to say no if it's compliant with the ordinance relative to parking, and it doesn't sound like we have much we can say on the storage. So, I don't know that we have much discretion.
I guess my only question would be, what commitment do we have to the landscaping plan?
That's going to be a requirement, right, Nick?
Yeah, so we'd have, we'd put, you should say, within six months, by, so, if I may, by August 1st, the landscape has to be in, or he'd be in violation of his site plan again. So, I would want to have the spring to plant that, make sure we get it right. Nick, you're, you're the city forester, correct? Correct. Yeah, so it was my intent to meet with the city forester and some, any neighbors onsite, maybe when the weather turns, early spring, March possibly, to hammer this thing out.
Yeah, you can do that.
And we'll get it put in. Yep, so, that's fair.
Including trees by 214 Fraser.
And the intent with that is just to see what's growing during the springtime, just a little bit warmer weather as well.
So, the drawing, the site plan shows plantings throughout the site. Do those currently exist, or are those planned? And that's what Mr. Bando will work with the applicant on.
I would work with him on the proposed. And then, again, like you said, we evaluate, after the winter, we could evaluate the vegetation, and then ideas to screen it, even down at the bottom, like Commissioner Kendrick just said, if we could find something, we can get in that pocket. Now, if the dumpster's not there, maybe we could get some plants in there.
Right, so see the plantings on the top end of the site? Are those currently there, or those are planned?
The ones that are plain circles are current.
Right.
The ones that have more of a symbol are proposed. Correct. So, there's, yeah, exactly.
There's a ton of vegetation in the spring and summer, it's just in the winter time, when it just kind of, it's a few months, the winter months.
And that's the idea, is to get that evergreens in there, in the winter, that will help block it. That's right.
Are we ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
I guess I'll make a motion to approve the site plan of cars, subject to the dumpster being relocated to the east portion of the site, which will be, will have a masonry enclosure in accordance with ordinance requirements, and the landscaping to be in place by August 1st. And the applicant will meet with city staff to determine appropriate screening and find to the landscape plan.
Okay, is there support?
I just want to confirm with Vidya real quick. So, this is being considered, this is being considered and approved as open storage, correct? And it has the appropriate screening requirements?
Yes. I, based upon the discussion at the meeting, the big concern I see is the trailers are allowed to be on the site as part of an industrial operation, as long as they are trailers that can be moved in and out of the site. The applicant cannot park them here for two to three years in a row and make them into permanent storage areas, and that is where the crucial difference lies. The other aspects of the site plan comply with what the ordinance requires. So, any motion made by the planning commission should probably include a condition that the site will be regularly inspected by the city to ensure that the containers are moved, and when structures, when metal containers are kept permanently in one location itself, there is wear and disrepair on them. Containers that are actually mobile and move out and back into the site do not have that kind of wear. So, the city should consider regular inspections in order to ensure that the trailers are part of the industrial operation as moving units and not permanent boxes sitting on the property.
But, but, I'm sorry, let me interrupt you.
No, that's okay. I just, when, so the McKenna note here has quoted the section in the ordinance that applies to open storage. None of that is laid out here, so I just, are we missing part of that from the ordinance? Is, is that somewhere else? I just don't think we have, I don't know that we can.
No, and, and for me, it sounds like we're just going to end up right back here in 30 days or 60 days when those trailers haven't been moved by admission, and the city's spending more time and resources going out and inspecting the site, knowing what it's going to find, so.
Mr. Jack, I just answered.
The ordinance here doesn't say they have to be moved. So, I don't know if there's some other ordinance that's not quoted.
Can we break this down into two things? I think, I think in the section that you quoted about outside storage, it gives the planning commission the right to waive that six-foot screen around it by landscaping or what other means. So, they came, to be fair, they came in with the six-foot fence on the east side with the slats, and then the landscaping at the top is really the screen for those trailers. So, I think that is being met. Not just, it's not a typical fence around the trailers. It was the periphery that counts, so that would cover that.
On her letter, point number 12, it says, "Site plan proposed an eight-foot tall chain link fence with green fiberglass inserts."
That's on, on the east side.
East side, over here.
Yeah, and then the rest of it is, right, Vidya, the planning commission can waive that right of just a fence by doing other alternate means of screening. That's what the landscaping at the top of the hills for.
Yeah. And the particular screening requirement is applicable actually to equipment, vehicles, and/or materials. So, these are technically being considered as vehicles because they are trailers, equipment, vehicles, and materials. So, this is where the storage is, so this screen fence is actually doing job of screening. And there is an existing fence here, which, because of the location of these spaces and the angle that it is at, I'm not sure how you would screen them without blocking off this access.
Okay, so they're being considered as vehicles or trailers. Is there somewhere in the ordinance, this is what I want to be clear of, that states that they have to be moved? Or is the ordinance gray that it doesn't state it? Because if, if they have to be moved, well, then, then we know this is not, does not meet the intent of the ordinance.
It doesn't say you have to.
If it doesn't state it, then I think this can be approved, and that's just what I want to clarify.
The ordinance does not specify that a vehicle or a trailer has to be moved, but a vehicle or a trailer by its innate nature is, is something that moves. So, if, if you look at the nuisance ordinance that the city has got, it probably has got a rule against leaving a vehicle parked permanently in an area. So.
I have a hard time adding that, adding something to that effect to a motion that the city has no teeth to enforce.
Yeah.
In that case, you could just make a motion requiring that these trailers be maintained, even if you're not comfortable asking for it to be moved.
So, there's a motion on the floor?
There's a motion on the floor, and my notes state that it's to approve the site plan, move the dumpster to the east, to the east portion of the site. It will be, have a masonry enclosure consistent with the ordinance, trees, landscaping plan, and to meet with staff on or before August 1st of 2023. Is that generally summarizes your thing?
Okay.
And that's the motion.
Well, is there support?
Yeah, right, is there support for the motion? At this point, there was none.
Support.
Okay, support by King. Okay. Mr. Maher, the role, please.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, Lord?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hauser?
No.
Secretary Sage?
Yes.
Mayor Bixson?
No.
Commissioner Kendrick?
No.
And Commissioner Stone?
No.
So, the motion doesn't pass, we want a motion to deny the site plan as approved, and then the court action would take place where they'd have to go back to the approved site plan, which would mean remove the trailers, remove the storage things, and have a clean site that's just got striping on it.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Sure.
So, moving then.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, with the motion, is there support?
Support.
Mr. Stone, support. Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Kendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lord?
No.
Commissioner King?
No.
Commissioner Sage?
Yes.
Okay. I'll vote yes. Sorry, sir.
That's okay.
That's all right.
Okay.
So, the motion to deny the site plan has been, entered, cracked, and so we'll follow through with the court action, which is clean the site, whatever the court said.
Okay, thank you, sir. Good. Okay, moving on. This will be item number 6A. This is consideration of a Paint Creek Luxury condo at 704 Woodward. This is a follow-up discussion of the request for conditional rezoning from L1 Limited Industrial to RM-2, which is multiple family residential. Now, a couple of things. Obviously, the meeting is very well-attended, and we appreciate everyone coming here. This issue has come up prior, previously in a meeting, and it was very well-received in the sense that everyone was respectful, everyone was polite, and we are optimistic that's going to continue this evening. Just to be clear, there's no vote tonight to allow this, to deny it, or anything. That's not what tonight is about. This is strictly to determine whether or not this matter will be set for a public hearing at the next meeting. That is it. Okay? Everyone is going to have an opportunity to talk, but we're going to give the floor to the applicant. Actually, we're going to give the floor to Vinnie first, right?
Actually.
No, just them. Okay. She's not even going to review it. So the applicant's going to go, and then we will open it up to public comment, but we're going to be respectful, we're going to be polite, we're going to be considerate, just as we were last time, okay? And we'll go from there, okay? So to the applicant, if you'd like to step up to the lectern, the floor is yours, sir.
I will. I've got a presentation for convenience.
Sure.
I'm just passing out hard copies of some of the slides if you want to see more clearly.
Thank you.
We have some spares for the public as well.
Thank you.
For after.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I can hold up ahead. Thank you. Thank you very much. My name's Doug Hamborsky. I'm here representing Champion Development Group. And we've actually changed our design. We're going to do all shipping containers and maybe kind of stack them.
This will be a quick meeting.
Sorry, I couldn't. He told me to do it. Actually, he gave me 10 bucks. Anyhow, the development team has not changed from our last meeting. The development group is Len Nadolski, his son, Michael, who's passing out goodies, myself, Doug Hamborsky. The landowners are here from Solaronics, the Rush family. Our architects, Stuckey Vitale. Stonefield Engineering is our civil engineer. Giffles Webster is our traffic consultants. PM Environmental is our environmental consultants, and Frank Rewald and Sons will hopefully be our contractor. What's significant about our meeting since our November meeting when we were here is that we've made a significant, we believe are significant reductions in scope of the project. And the, these are the three primary things that you will see in the submission tonight. In November, we were proposing 106 condominium units. We are now proposing 88 condominium units. We had a four-story structure. We now have a three-story structure. We had a 50-foot structure to the parapet, and we now have a 38-foot-high structure to the parapet. So we, we listened to some of the concerns by staff, by planning commission, and by the public, and we've made, you know, again, what we consider significant alterations for tonight's presentation. Here's a more broad summary of all the revisions. Unit count, I just went over, as well as the stories in the feet. Traffic volume will, you know, be reduced by about 17% from that originally, original submission, just by math. The environmental remediation of the site remains as proposed in November 7th, which is a cleanup of the site. Brownfield assistance was not discussed previously. While not a planning commission issue, we are, we will be requesting some brownfield assistance due to the scope reduction. Design features, there, there's a whole slew of them. You'll see them in the presentation. They remain as is, as originally presented. As far as, we're requesting a conditional rezone to RM2, and these are the conditions that we are voluntarily requesting. And the conditions are, we're going to put a crossing, signals at the Paint Creek Trail Crossing that crosses the bend there where Woodward and Ludlow meet, same as on November 7th. The landscaping, additional landscaping at the trail, along the trail, same as the 7th. The building height will be a condition. Building mass, four stories, now three will be a condition. Unit density down to 88 will be a condition. Residential parking is essentially the same as November 7th. Will be in full compliance with the ordinance. In guest parking, we were providing 31, now we'll be providing 15. Now, one of the things that as developers, we have a strong background and history with is taking notes at these meetings and trying to, you know, trying to react to them in hopefully a positive way. So these are some of our notes. We, you know, we heard loud and clear concerns about density and traffic, and so with our reduction in the number of condos, of course, the traffic would go down proportionately. Height and bulk, we carved a whole story off 25% of the height. 50-foot setback, we clarified, we are providing what's required in RM2, the 50-foot setback on all northwest and south sides of the building, and around 95% of the east side, there's one corner where we will encroach into the 50-foot. But regarding the whole site, it's a, it's a very minimal area, and, and we're only encroaching because of how the property juts in by the DPW yard. There was an important clarification we wanted to put in regarding density calcs. There was a statement made that units per acre, which is a calculation that's offered in the master plan, and, and that would produce a maximum count per the master plan of around 62 units. And what I'm done here with this is I'm clarifying our understanding of the actual zoning ordinance. The master plan is not law, it's, it's suggestive information for changing districts, ordinances, et cetera. The actual ordinance from our reading for RM2 is that the density is calculated by 1,000 square feet of land for every one-bedroom unit, 2,000 square feet of land for every two-bedroom unit. You see the formula there. We have 31 one-bedrooms, 57 two-bedrooms, 31,000 plus 114,000. We would require 145,000 square feet of land. The property is 3.8 acres, which is 165,763 square feet of land. Therefore, we believe that per density purposes of our proposal, our new proposal would be in conformance with the RM2 standard. Other, other comments we made, there was one resident mentioned they like going along the trail, and they're concerned our four-story building would, you know, block some of the sunlight, so we want to point out a three-story building, which is going to, is going to block less sunlight. Concerns on ADA clarifications, all building designs are, are designed to code and will have appropriate ADA accessibility throughout the structure from common areas. There are even certain residential units, a percentage of them, that need to have ADA doors and shower facilities and toilets and, and things of that nature, and our building will be in compliance with that. Landscape maintenance, this is going to be a condominium association. There will be a budget established for landscape maintenance so that the, the place is always nice. These buyers are going to want to make sure it stays nice, and so we have high confidence that the site will not become scruffy over time. There was a question of the signalized crosswalk. How big should it be? How, you know, what kind of signs? How bright? How, how should it work? We will work with the city engineers and provide essentially whatever they feel is appropriate for, for the application at this location. So we are showing some signals on our presentation, but we aren't limiting our scope to, to just what we're showing. We, we are pledged to work with the city to make sure public safety weighs in on what we should have in the engineering. And there was an interesting question of definition of luxury or our intent, and, you know, that's pretty subjective, but essentially, you know, we're going to provide a facility that, we're certainly going to be proud of, our residents are going to be proud of. We're going to use high-quality materials. The, the price point of the units will ensure that the, the people that buy and own and live in this facility are of a, you know, a solid financial group, and it will be a very, very, very nice property. So that's the essence of the changes from our last visit. I want to do an abbreviated version of some of the facts and features that we showed you in November. This should go fairly quickly, and we have some new renderings at the end for three stories. So we pointed out a unique-shaped site. We've got the Paint Creek on the north side, the Paint Creek Trail on the west, of course, the road bend on the bottom, south, and then we butt up to both the Rochester DPW Yard and some mixed commercial properties on the east side. And it's a very odd shape. So our features is common condominium build, luxury amenities, have a sky deck, a package room, barbecue areas, fire pits, covered parking still, lush landscaping, attractive mill-inspired. We moved out of the mountains. We won't go to the mountains any longer, but we believe our architecture is what we would call mill-inspired natural timber, stone, siding materials that give you a very natural feel. And then the 88 units and the three-story 38 feet. Zoning, the current property is zoned I-1. We're requesting a conditional RM2 zoning. We are surrounded by RM1 in the orange. This is from the, an excerpt from the zoning map. And then to the east is zoned I-1, more I-1 in industrial 1, and park uses, which are the, the hatched. The closest single-family house is about 515 feet away, and that's a back to a backyard. Most of the houses that have any sightlines to the property are over 700 feet away. A little synopsis of the I-1 zoning is that it's been this zoning for decades. It's been occupied by manufacturing uses for decades, and within the zoning ordinance, several assorted high-intensity uses are allowed. My previous presentation, I had three slides just on uses. I'll, I'll save that much minutia for tonight, but feel free to review the list in, in the ordinance. There are many. It's important to recognize that if, you know, some form of rezoning doesn't occur, it's a valuable piece of property. And so it's likely that the, the current owners, or I can't, you know, exactly say what they might or might not do, but they would, they would have to do something with the property, and as such, to the existing ordinance, it could be developed into a little industrial campus that would include multiple uses. It could have a veterinary clinic in there, there could be another car wash, we need another car wash on that street. And so it, it, it's not just that, oh, they might open the doors and start, you know, making widgets again. It's important to understand all the things that could happen on a 3.8-acre industrial site, and it doesn't necessarily just mean a big commercial enterprise or industrial enterprise. So the conditional rezoning request, some of this is redundant, but here's our conditions. Went through it on the checklist. Signalized crossing at the Paint Creek Trail, additional dense landscaping, limit height to 38 feet, limit stories to three, limit density to 88 units, provide full parking per zoning ordinance, and provide additional exterior parking for guests. If there are additional conditions that, that are requested, we would, or discussed, we would consider those as well, but these are the ones that we've identified so far that would support the project. Important information came out from last meeting's discussions regarding the master plan. And what, in our study, I'm an architect by trade. In my hometown, I've been on my planning commission for 23 years. I've participated in our development of our master plan. We're doing our update to our master plan as we speak in the, over the next five months. And the master plan is a very complex and helpful document for planning commissions and for the city. When I reviewed your current master plan, which by the way, was just updated last year, what I saw and read was, you know, this is a mature community of single-family homes for the most part, and in the master plan, it does call for a need for alternate, what they call, what you call, alternate housing options, which is condominiums and apartments, something other than the vast, wonderful, single-family housing stock that exists. Also, there stated in, in the, in the master plan is a goal to develop housing with greater density. And then there actually is a section about increasing city revenue, which would, you know, happen if a rezone from industrial to, to our residential, that would happen times, times three or so. So I, you know, you commissioners know your master plan, and I invite the, the public to, you know, look, look and read your master plan to confirm that what I'm saying is appropriate and my interpretations are accurate. There's one important clarification I want to just kind of outline, and this has to do with the future land use map. Now, the future land use map is, looks like a zoning map, but it's not. It's within the master plan. It has colors, and each color corresponds to a proposed future use. Well, our property, which is blown up there on the left, is orange. And previously, our property, up until a few months ago, when this newer map was adopted, it said mixed residential. Somewhere between, some, in this current iteration, they've colored our property and the property to the south as two-family residential. And what's noteworthy here is if you look on the, the overall map or the blow-up map, we are surrounded by orange, which is multi-family. And what I just need to point out, regardless, you know, the, and I've written here that it's a guideline, you know, future land use maps are always guidelines. They're, they're not meant, they're not like a zoning ordinance where you have to follow it. It's, it's a thought, it's an idea. You know, if a rezoning were occurred, this would be something nice to consider. I just need to practically point out, in as, as gentle a way as possible, that due to the, I call it market value pressure, two-family houses will, will never be developed on these two properties, or certainly not ours. The, the land is too expensive, you know, you'd have a duplex house, you'd have to sell it for close to a million dollars, and that's not going to happen. So I'm pointing out a business reality that I think is important to understand for if we want to point to the future land use map and say, well, it says two-family house, so therefore you have to. Traffic study, we hired Giffles Webster, which the city has used. Our city where I live uses, actually, they're doing our master plan. So here's the full traffic study, lots of charts, some graphs, expensive, and they did, we think, a very thorough job. Within the traffic study, it was pointed out that Ludlow and Woodward are what's called collector streets. In other words, they're designed to take additional traffic off of side streets and to have higher traffic volumes compared to side streets. And so here's some, you know, here's some chart information from the, the report that shows some of this information. Also, it's important to clarify that traffic is always changing. Recently, we've had this pandemic, which has reduced the, the amount of traffic, people coming and going to work, properties that become vacant. There's a number of commercial properties that, that are vacant that used to have, well, Solaronics, for example, they used to have 50, 70 cars in their parking lot for decades, and for the last three years, they've had zero. So that's, you know, and that, that's just a constantly changing issue. The seasons of the year, traffic changes, school activities, summer versus when school in, school out, recreational, people going to the park, et cetera. So what we're pointing out between the report and our observations is that the current traffic on Ludlow and Woodward is sort of artificially low. Regardless of whether we come or go, traffic is, is likely to go back up as all these different factors continue to evolve, but they would probably only go up to what the original traffic engineers envisioned when they said these are collector streets. So here are some photographs for the Solaronics property dating back to 1976, '97, 2009, showing a full parking lot that would, and there were times, I understand, where there was some two-shift activity, a night shift, not as populated, but there was always traffic coming and going from this property for decades. I won't read through all of this, but these are the, the, the assorted bullets from the traffic engineer and the net finding of the. And the net finding of the study is the traffic from our project, and this was based on over 100 units, now we're down to 88, would be comparable and potentially less than a new development of uses currently allowed in the I-1 zoning district. So we go away, you know, and, and the rushes need to put the use of the build, you know, the property into use, whatever uses, user uses end up there will most likely generate comparable traffic to what our proposed project is going to generate. Here's the picture of what these signalized crosswalk signs are in other communities. And so this is a rendering of what we would propose, subject to what the city thinks they might want at that location. As far as the Paint Creek Trail enhancements, this is a significant little fact. Solar Onyx has, I guess I'd call it, it's a, it's a, it's a contract agreement to use that sliver of land, which is part of the trail. It's, it's a legally binding contract for use. It's in effect now. If you walk the trail, you'll see it, there's a chain link fence and gravel. We're going to abandon that. We're going to give the property, not give it, we're going to, we're going to abandon the contract so that the property can now be back part of the trail, which is not necessary if it stays industrial for the foreseeable future. Within that area, we're going to plant additional landscaping, dense landscaping to, you know, enhance the trail and to also screen both our property from the trail and the trail from our property. Environmental, this has been an industrial site for decades. It's, it's understandable that it's not, you know, pristine, clean, perfect soil. So we hired PM Environmental to look at the property. The good news is it's, it's not Love Canal. The bad news is it's not pristine, beautiful soil. It's going to need some remediation, and we still have some studies ahead, but from the studies we've done so far, we have an understanding of generally the scope and the nature of where we have to head with the remediation. And, and PM has started to put together a plan. The, the net message on environmental is that the property is going to get improved from a current industrial occupancy, where it doesn't, you don't have to do anything different, to residential, where you have to bring the soil up to certain standards and you have to put in certain systems that would keep, keep the, the air and soil to a certain EPA standard level. Brownfield discussion, not really relevant for planning commission, but it's important for us to bring it up. We will be looking at participating in brownfield program at this point in time because of the reduced scope and the, and the need for some assistance. But our understanding is, for a city to, to have brownfield program, to, to clean up a, an environmentally compromised property, industrial, and convert it to residential is almost exactly what the brownfield program was, was created to do. So we feel that we're a sort of a poster child for that application. So here's our building design. The site plan is near identical to what it was before. We have a V-shaped building sort of facing the creek. The footprint of the building is the same. The parking arrangements and the drive, that's all a little, a little different because of our population. Here's our first floor with our parking. The way, by the way, that we survived taking an entire floor, each floor has 30-some units. And we went from 106 to 88. We didn't, you know, so what we were able to do is take some of the floor, some of the units on the second floor and create these garden, these wonderful garden units, and then still have parking as well. So we did sort of a half floor on the grade level. And then for floors two and three, they're fully populated with one- and two-bedroom condominium units. Here's a new sightline study of the three-bed, of the three-story design. And the red sightlines, you can see that really from the entire north and west sides of the property, you, you will never see this building. The, the trees are quite mature and dense and in the 50 to 70-foot range, and, and we just, you know, never see it. So here's some four-story versus three-story, and you can see the reduction, you know, you see more green and less building. Here's some other views from other angles where you see the same effect. Again, this is where on the handouts, if you wanted to look at them, feel free. Here's from the trail, and then here's from the road. So here's, you know, really the final considerations we'd like to leave for our discussion this evening. We'll be providing a much-needed new luxury condominium living facility to Rochester. We'll be upgrading a blighted industrial site and vacant into a vibrant, high-quality residential property. We're going to bring additional new revenue to the city. We have what we think is a very attractive design theme, mill-inspired, perfect location for a three-story residential buffered by the trees. If we were in the middle, surrounded by houses, we'd probably have a different dialogue, but with those 60, 70-foot tall trees, it's really ideal nestled in there, consistent with core goals of the city master plan's housing direction, we feel. Additional insignificant traffic is now further reduced. Existing negative environmental conditions to be updated to new residential standards, and we will include significant improvements to the Paint Creek Trail. Len, and if you want to come up, kind of close out our presentation?
So I just really wanted to, just ask the council to fairly consider this submission. The Champion Group, they, second to none. They've come to our building numerous times, they've discussed this project with us. We have, I don't know, there are so many different proposals, contracts, we've seen over four years, that some of them were okay, some of them were out there. You know, and this one, when they came along, it was, it just like knocked our socks off, like this is awesome. This is like something that, to see be put into our building that we've been at since, I don't know, since I was probably a kid. I mean, quite honestly, we've, and then to go to a reduced, like, the reduced scope of this building, I mean, we've all had to make sacrifices, we've had to make sacrifices. But honest and truly, no one wants to see a, a manufacturing building there anymore. I mean, that part of town needs, like, in my opinion, something residential. But if, I mean, we're still making plans. It is industrial, honest and truly, and if something doesn't get approved or some, this can't move forward, we're going to have to come back in there. Unfortunately, I mean, and we will, we're, you know, secondary plans to see what, to see what we can do. So honest and truly, this concept, when we saw it, like I said, knocked our socks off. We think it would be perfect for the community. And quite honestly, just, you know, thank you guys for considering this.
I'm Len Nadolsky from the Champion Development Group. Thank you for hearing us out this evening. In our last meeting, there was about 13 points that we took away from the recommendations, and those 13 things were addressed in each and every line. We're known to understand what people are looking for and then converted it into our design. And that was doable by working with the rushes. They worked with us on the price of the, the property to be able to reduce its mass and size and still keep it a project. So I want to thank them for reaching out because they see the vision of what we're doing here to make it work as well. In addition to that, with the brownfield funds to help clean up the site, that still makes it a viable project. So that's why we were able to do it, listening to what you all recommended, what we do, and still keep the community a nice, a nice look and fit within where that area is. So I really got to commend everybody on the team and how hard they were to put this together and to try to address all the appoint, all the areas of concern. And change is difficult in a community. I mean, I get it. And if I lived on the street, I understand some of the opposition. However, we need to move on. We've got to look at our tax base. The wages of our employees are going up. We've got to find ways to get more revenue to pay them as a city. This will probably bring in 15 more times where the tax base than the individual vacant building. And in today's environment, with interest rates the way they are, as we look at this, making the concessions, we can still make it work, and we're prepared to do that. And we have a track record to be able to do it and make a nice project with it. With that, I would hope you would accept this with open arms, and we're open here to, to, to work with you if there's items or issues that need to be worked with, and we're known to do that. Thank you so much for your time.
Open for questions here? Open for question for commissioners to the applicant?
Yeah, well, we're not having a public hearing, so it's just, the vote is, so you probably want to see if...
Right, no, understood, yes. So, okay, thank you very much to the applicants. We don't have any questions at this present time, at this particular time in the, well, did you, you want to wait?
Yeah, sure, why not?
Okay, all right, we'll wait till after the public hearing. Okay. So what we'll do is we'll open this up to public comment, and if you have a comment that you would like to make concerning this particular development on the agenda, please step up to the lectern, state your name, state your address, and then the floor is yours. Not all at once?
Two minutes.
Okay. Good evening, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Good.
Scott Marley, 753 Ludlow Avenue. I've spoken to you once or twice before. If someone had told me a year ago that we were going to have an 88-unit condo complex at the corner of Ludlow and Woodward, my eyes would have jumped out of their sockets. 106 units, 88 units. I feel like maybe we were given 106 units in the first place, just so 88 wouldn't seem so bad. I've been to all these meetings, or at least watched them on video. I've heard a lot of the residents give reasons why they don't want this to happen. One thing I haven't heard is the case for this to happen from the perspective of the city, and why somebody who is representing the city would want to vote in favor of this proposal. And so I would invite Mr. Banda and anybody else who may feel in favor of this to, to make that case.
Well, and I appreciate what you're saying. This is a process that we're going through, so no one at this commission has made up their mind one way or the other as to in favor, against, indifferent. This is part of the process that we undertake for any development that comes in front of the city. So if I can alleviate those concerns to you and to everyone else here, this is the process, and we have to let the process move forward, okay? So if this does in fact go to another level, at that time, you will certainly see a much more vocal and much more, I would say, robust discussion from the commission as it pertains to this particular development. So I can assure you, we receive all the emails. Every one of us gets all the emails. Our inboxes are flooded with emails from residents, and we read them, they are circulated, they are in our packets. I probably got seven or eight of them today. So everything that you send to the city about your comments does in fact get to us, and we take them all very seriously. And as I said at the last meeting, I wish every planning commission meeting was this well-attended because it's nice to see that there's an interest, it's nice to see that there's civic engagement. We want this, and our city is better for it. So to that, I know it doesn't necessarily answer your question right now, sir, but I can assure you, it's going to come.
I do appreciate your response, but keeping in mind that this is probably the fourth meeting that, that this has been discussed in, I would have expected somebody to present a positive case in favor of this from the perspective of the city, not from the developer's perspective or the builder's perspective. Why would the city want to do this? I haven't heard that. And I would expect that to be very important in the discussion moving forward towards a vote.
And I, and I appreciate that. And again, I'm not dodging your question or your issue. This is how it works. And we have been to numerous meetings. We've all sat here in numerous meetings for this particular site, for various ideas and various development plans for the site. So trust me, this is, for the fourth time that you've been in a hearing, we've probably been to two dozen of these for this particular site. So it's not lost on us, the time investment that we've had on this job.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. Yeah, please, come on up. I don't know you, so you'll have to state your name for the record, please, yes.
Thank you, thank you. Patricia Kane, K-A-N-E, 817 West Fourth Street. Just something I've heard in more or less a generalization, the marketing and the thrust of these dense developments seem to be for taxes to come in to afford our municipal and city employees. The next thing is that they seem to market to the affluent. They're not marketing to what we need here, which is single-family affordable housing for young families and for children. Every one of these dense developments, there was never a play area for children. No space put aside so they could safely have a little place to walk out and do something and get some exercise. I assume they're going to want to cross the trail and use the park that we pay for. We may have to expand that. All the brownfields, which even Randazzo was going for, we're not going to see any taxes off that for a long time. This will be the same thing. And yet everybody's pushing for how much money is going to go in, how is going to keep this city solvent? So I will say this, the city's been solvent because all of us that can't afford those have paid for the city, and we willingly will have continued to do it. But what we're seeing, even as an older person here, we're pushing out the young people because we can't, they can't afford the million-dollar houses, they can't afford $3,000 or better in rent. For some of them, that is more than a month's take-home pay. And I think that we need to start looking at what is needed and not the density. And again, it comes down to, we have projects not off the ground yet. They're not even built, so we haven't seen the volume yet of traffic, people, strains on infrastructure, Randazzo's a good thing, then we had the Mosheri that kind of built, we had the Suavey, we got Mosheri again over here. And maybe we need to kind of, I don't want to hurt people, I know it's about profit, I know it's about money, but we're not very big, okay? And I think we need some breathing space, but we need something that really brings two things. They don't want manufacturing there, but we lived with it for years and we loved it. Because you know what? It gave jobs to people in the community. That doesn't, although it looks very nice, and I don't know how many people can afford that. And if they're coming and they're affording it, they're not working here. That's kind of an issue. So I just kind of want to, just, it's an opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. How you doing?
Good. My name's Richard Blasnik. I live at 402 Taylor. You'll hear from me a little later, but this is a subject that I kind of feel near and dear. I don't live directly on Ludlow. I do travel there every single day to pick up my kids from school and drive them back home. Actually, I make five, six different trips down there a day. Besides, I walk four to five miles a day, I'm an avid trail walker. Just a couple of quick questions, and I'm not very fluent on this, so I do apologize to everybody. But if you could answer a couple of questions, what is the average income or average cost of house that's being built currently around our neighborhoods? And this kind of does relate to Pat's concern of outpricing the neighborhood. In fact, there's two houses that just got built on Woodward, just finished, and one's currently going on Ludlow. Actually, way, way too big for that neighborhood. It's grossly too large, millions of dollars. As you mentioned, these are going to be luxury, and again, comes back to the point, single-family homes. I'm a single father, I have three lovely ladies in training, two twins, a nine-year-old and 14-year-old. This is never going to allow anybody like myself to come in here. I break my back every single day to put my kids in a situation where they have a good school district. Our school districts, can you tell me where they rank right now? They have fallen off tremendously. Notting of the hat, tremendously. I don't know if it's worth for me to stay here and pay the taxes... I don't know if it's worth for me to stay here to pay the taxes that I have, but the school districts, they keep falling back behind. We do have multiple condos here now. Do we know what those prices were, the ones on Main Street? Million dollars? There's now ones being across the street being put up, guaranteed those will be a million dollars. These, I'm sure, are going to be close to a million dollars. You're just pushing everybody out. And as somebody for me, I'm not super young, I'm turning 50, I have three young children. It's just not the way we want to look. And again, to bring up points, there is other properties, there is a cross-street fire department that have vacant properties along the Clinton River, right across the police station, I'm sorry, the fire department. Right next door to that, you have a senior assisted living, that sign that's been there for, I've lived in Rochester for almost 20 years and that's been up there for close to half of that now. Nothing's ever done there so far. Is that sign still there?
Yeah, it's been like three years.
It is, okay. Three years. So it's been there for at least three years, nothing's been touched. Has that actually been sold, that property, to that company that's, the signs on there? I don't know, because I'm asking, I'm not trying to be rude.
I couldn't tell you.
I'm just answering some questions.
The Mosheris own it, they have a site plan, but they haven't built it.
Okay, so again, we've...
It's been like three years or so.
Yeah, we rented, we basically give them the property that they've not done anything to start any building, so they have not any paid for anything at this point either. But just as, coming from a single person, it's being very, very difficult to do that. Even houses next to me, I bought my house for under $300,000, you won't find that anymore. The person that's down the street from me, they're all going up, making them $900,000 houses. And it's just getting to a point where you can't even find a neighborhood that just doesn't look right. And there's stuff all over the place that just doesn't match. I understand tax money, we all live on it, we understand that, things are going up except for salaries, at least in my area. Costs go up with salaries though. So I do appreciate your time and I'll speak to you again soon.
Thank you, sir. Any others? Yeah, please.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Reese and I live at 757 Ludlow. I also don't support the rezoning of this property for this dense multifamily unit for many reasons, but the biggest one is this is not supported in our master plan. As you guys know and as it's been pointed out, it's zoned for, well, the future land use map, it's supposed to be RT, which is 25 feet tall. This is a lot taller than that. And it doesn't even meet all of the requirements of RM2 in the master plan or the ordinances because it does not meet the setbacks all the way around. But more than that, City Council has been talking about how our ordinances and our master plan don't match up. There are inconsistencies and we need to tweak our ordinances so that they match. That was the word that was used, tweak. And there are some tweaks that need to be made and they're going to be looked at, I guess, in groups of two or three zones at these meetings. So if this is approved or pushed forward for public, a public hearing, before we know what those zones are going to look like in our ordinances, we could potentially be okaying something that might not be legal in the future. That's something to think about. We talk about our ordinances and did you guys know if this was two stories tall, it would be maxed out at 16 units? But because it's three stories, it can be 88, it can be 106. Those are the kinds of things that need to be looked at when our ordinances are tweaked. I was at the meeting January 16th between the Planning Commission and City Council. And for those that don't know, they were talking about zoning. McKenna and Associates were here and the city was advised on at least two separate occasions to follow our master plan. One person said, "Follow your master plan whenever possible when considering rezoning." For sure, that is the bottom line. And the other, "The master plan is technically held as a guiding document." Remember, this is how the city was advised. It is designed after countless input from your own citizens. So if you're going to deviate from the vision of your own citizens, there has to be a compelling argument for why you want to deviate. There has to have been some dramatic change in society, living conditions or the site itself that necessitated you actually deviating from what you had set as your vision. These people believe in our master plan and we trust what you've told us. So if this goes forward and it's rezoned not according to our master plan, what is the city going to do to protect themselves? Because you are now opening yourself up to liability in other parcels that are zoned this exact same way. If you say no to them, they're going to ask why, because this was okay. So please consider all of those things as you think about this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, in the black jacket, please step up to the lectern.
My name's Odette Moore and I live on 1146 Ridgeway. And I've been a Rochester city member for about 34 years. So I've lived here a long time and I've used a lot of the facilities, especially the, the Paint Creek Trail, which I love. And as I have gone to that trail, because I lived close to that at one point over in Great Oaks, I really felt that that, that building needed to be gone. And I thought that it was a big distraction to the Paint Creek Trail. And I feel that this particular development and how much time and effort has been put into it and how beautifully nestled into there makes that area look a lot better than what it is now. And especially with the fear that it could be considered, you know, manufacturing. I feel like it's just a real distraction. I was in that area just here a few days ago and looked at it and I really believe that this, although the neighbors feel that it will increase the, the traffic and increase the people there, I really feel that it gives the city of Rochester more ability to have housing for condos for people like me that have a, a home that they'd like to get rid of and go to a smaller unit that's more feasible. It's, I don't think these will be a million dollars. Some of the condos that are in the city of Rochester are either, need to be repaired, they're not in good shape, or they're million-dollar condos. And we need some sort of in the, in-between. And I think that they've spent a lot of time, and I came to the meeting before, where they spent a lot of time trying to understand what the citizens need. And I love Rochester. I, I never want to move from here. And my husband worked in Ford Motor Company, so he drove a long way for 30-something years. So I don't want to destroy Rochester, I want to improve it. And I really feel, and I've talked to other people that I know that have grown up here, lived here, actually grew up on Ludlow, and they feel the same way, that this needs to be area, this piece of property needs to be improved. We don't need manufacturing there. We need it to look aesthetically nice. And I think that they're trying really hard with the trees and the way that they're trying to get back to the trail, not abuse that trail area, that they're trying hard to make it a, a type of, of resident, the residential community that someone could enjoy being in and not paying a million dollars. And so I really like the style of it. It would be something that I would consider, you know, I'm, my children are grown, I have a big house, and I'm not saying I'm rich, but I would look, I would consider this piece of property to go live in. And I think we need to think about change. Change is hard and I've lived here a long time, but I really think this would be a good, positive change, just like the homes that have been improved on Ludlow. A lot of those have been torn down or renovated. And I think it looks nice. So I think we all have to look at it in a different perspective and not just constantly think of, you know, the noise, the tax base and all that. What will it do to make that street, that corner right there, look better? And I really feel it's an improvement and I would definitely consider it. Thank you.
That's my, thank you. Let's keep the clapping and the applause. If you don't mind, let's just keep it quiet and neutral, if you don't mind. I appreciate that, everyone. Okay. Who would like to, sir, I think with the glasses and the hood, please? How you doing?
Well, thank you.
Chris Grab, 124 Woodward.
Jen and others took my thunder and, and, and did a lot more with it than, than I'd be able to. I, I think that this is antithetical to the, to the master plan and I can't wait to hear from, from you guys with, with the city's perspective, that's the next one point. So I'll, I'll just say a couple of smaller things. One, 15, 15 parking spaces for, for guests. Clearly, that's going to spill over. People are going to be parking up and down the street and, and we've talked about traffic being a huge problem. Now you're going to have people parallel parking on Woodward, on, on Ludlow and then crowding the sidewalks in, in addition to the additional parking. So that's one thing. The other thing is, you know, here's this bucolic, prelapsarian paradise that they're talking about. How long would it take to actually get to the 60-feet-high trees and, and who's going to guarantee that they'll, they'll take off? That's, that will take forever. I'll be like long dead, I'm going to get one foot in the grave now. So, you know, so I'll, I'll just make those two points and I'm good.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
You look very healthy to me though, so don't worry about...
I'm, I'm dog walker.
All right, there you go. All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to make a comment? Sir with the hat in the back, please come on up. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Mark Presnel, I live in Great Oaks on 821 Aspen since 1990. I've enjoyed the community, Paint Creek, fishing with my son, bringing up through the years and always enjoy that. I do agree with Odette that something maybe could, better could be done there, but I also ask about the master plan and whatever other things are in the community that could fulfill the need and the opportunity to provide more in, housing for people in all the income ranges that we have. So that'd be the first thing. I don't know the master plan, I can't speak to it, excuse me, at a detailed level, but what I would say is, have we looked in, you know, used up all of the allocation that we have before we start changing it? That's the first thing. The second thing is, I think we need to be a little more creative. One thought I had was, we have the park, we have the trail, we have dinosaur hill. Why couldn't that be an extension? And totally get off this discussion, industrial, home, make it part of our park, make it part of our community. And that would meet all the needs of making it a good place, get rid of the eyesore, get rid of the risk of some other industrial activity and focus on something to actually change the community and use the other things that we have for the housing. Last, I was a little nervous, well, I am nervous. I'm a little nervous about the discussion around the brownfield and I'll tell you why. If we go down that path, I'm not sure what the strings are attached, but I know there's strings. You take money from the federal government, you give up freedom. This community will give up freedom. And the question is, do we know what that is before we even go down that path? We need to know now, not discover it after it's already underway. So I will encourage my community, myself, I will also spend time getting to know about this, this particular topic in more detail. Now, this is my first meeting on it, but I do believe there is opportunity for change. We should embrace change, but the right change. And I'm not sure we've unturned, overturned all the stones. They have, they're trying to make a buck and paint it in a way that's going to make the decision easy for everybody. But have they actually described everything? Like, could they explain? What requirements are there in getting brownstone funding? What does the city give up by accepting that? I would ask that question. Other federal funding comes with a lot of strings and pretty soon, the federal government is telling us, this is the way you're going to zone. Thank you.
If, if I may, and just so everyone knows, I also coincidentally am chairperson of the Brownfield Commission for Rochester. There's no conflict, by the way, because I've sought guidance, but it's, it's state money. There's nothing federal whatsoever with brownfield money. It's all state. And so the issue as it pertains to the brownfield, just, you know, I don't want to put everyone to sleep right now, but it's, it's state, not federal. It doesn't have anything to do with federal government.
Okay. Typically, brown, EPA brownfield cleanups are federally funded somehow. Maybe it comes into the state from the Fed, but it typically does.
This would be from Eagle though, so it's all...
All right.
And so, no, no, and I'm not here to quarrel with you. No, 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 I'm just, I want to make sure that's all very clear before you...
So, so anyway, that, that, that would be my thought. I would ask the city to investigate, what does the land cost? Well, you can use the same brownfield money to clean it up, but we don't have to take the money and, and see what the, the option might be to turn it into more green space for the city. Thank you.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it. Ma'am in the back, please.
I'm just going to say, baby straight. Not nervous, too.
There's nothing to be nervous about.
So my name is Stephanie Bauer.
Wait till you get to the microphone, yes, please.
My name is Stephanie Bauer. I live at 608 Ludlow, right next to that big house that's being built. And I've been here since 2005. I was a single mom, came in and since been married, we have three kids. We love the city, it's amazing. And we love the trail, I run it as much as I can and we're there all the time in the summer. So I guess, you know, this presentation, by the way, well-done, it's beautiful. I think it's gorgeous. I like most things about it, except the location. The location doesn't fit, it's like putting a round peg in a square hole. It just doesn't fit there. Any condo that I've ever looked at has, at least on a corner where it's got two access streets, this isn't going to have that. This is going to be 88 condos and you times that by two, that's how many cars potentially are coming in and out of there and there's only one exit entrance spot. So I just feel like that's dangerous and going to increase traffic. It doesn't allow for traffic to go out of two different areas. Like my sister lives in a condo and she can get out two different ways. So to me, this is a very big building for a very small location and a, in a residential location with a trail. So you can put flashers and you can put signs, but that doesn't change the fact that that's a lot of traffic in a very small area, a narrow street, narrow street, a trail, a very small space. So unlike, you know, a condo going on Main Street and then a corner, and then a side street, it's got more access and you can get in and out of it easier. So that helps balance the traffic. So just for me, I just feel like it's too big for that space and for what's happening in there now, for the, you know, the people that, all the foot traffic. I mean, there's so many people that are walking, biking, jogging, and that's happening and that's going to affect all those people. So it'll be maybe great for the people that live there, but for the rest of the people that use that space, I think it'll make it very challenging. So that's just my perspective as a community member since 2005 and I think we, a lot of us agree because we talk about it a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, please.
Hi, my name's Janine Moreland. I live at 6167th Street. So walked over here this evening. I think we've heard a lot of good things and I appreciate the fact that clearly the developer has listened to things that have come up in the past. People talk about change and, and we have to, you know, prepare for change, do change as we go, all of those things. But I guess I want to reiterate some of the things other people have said in terms of the master plan because I think our community leadership, our residents have worked together to try to plan the kind of change that we want. And I didn't realize this, but it was, the comment was made earlier that that plan was reviewed just this past summer. So the people who are responsible for the future of our city, and I think the express intent of the plan to start with was to make sure that as Rochester moves into the next decade and the next decade and the next decade, that it continues to be the kind of place that we all love so much. And when that process was done, it wasn't zoned multifamily, multi-use, RM2, whatever. I have to assume that was for a reason. There's a lot of RM2 around it, I think the map showed that in red. It's not like we don't have any RM2. There's, you know, condos going up places, there's duplexes going up, but there was a reason that it was zoned the way it was. I have to assume that since it had such careful thought and input from a lot of people. So I guess my thinking is, okay, this, this could be a great project, but that's not where our city had planned it to be. And I guess I would just ask that we continue to be very thoughtful about the future and not say, oh, well, now this came up, so maybe we should think about that. No, let's have a plan and continue to pursue so that our community remains the way we want it to be in the future.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any final comments or questions? Any final comments or questions? Anyone want to speak? Sir, please, come on up.
Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
I'd just like to let you know, too, there's also two callers on with their hands raised.
Oh, thank you. I forget about that sometime. Thank you. Alright, so when we're done with these, we'll go to the people online, okay? Thank you. Sir, go ahead.
Good evening, Mike Lopez, 342 Woodward. Twenty-two-year resident of the city. I guess I'd start with just a fundamental disagreement with the bullet point that said much-needed luxury condos for the city of Rochester. I think that's the last thing Rochester needs, is more luxury condos or lofts. When I moved here in 2000, one of the reasons, one of the main reasons, was I saw in this city a small-town feel that valued parks, valued nature, the trail, and it was family-based. It was a family-based town with good schools, good parks, and quality of life. And what I've seen over twenty-two years is an increasing influx of developers who you can see site after site, and you could see the future, round up the usual suspects, because next will be the school district building, that's common, the eyes have been on the elevator property, you just run right down the list. And I'm sure Dilman and Upton someday will be next when they go out of business. And it's not what this city needs. This city was built around families. And to echo what was said previously, we should be looking at quality of life for our families that live here, and not luxury condos that, that doesn't bring value to our community. It's not what this town was about. So, I think this is a move in the wrong direction. I strongly oppose it, and I hope that we can find better use for this property that reflects the values of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, why don't you, you come on up.
Hi, Laurie Pinkham, 278 Reitman Court, just north of here. This, the question of cost has come up, and I don't know if it's, I'm, I'm sure this has been thought out and considered, but I'm wondering if it's possible for anybody here to, to give a, the scientific wild-ass guess of, what's the min-max range of, of these Because a lot of people are concerned with the cost of luxury, the luxury condos going in. Do you have a guess on, or, I have a feeling you've got more than a guess, but some of the target prices? So...
Yeah.
The other thing, I'm, I think what I'm mostly concerned, people have addressed so many things that I've thought of, but reduction in, in mass or volume doesn't necessarily mean a reduction in the footprint. And when I look at the map, I think page A1 point, actually, page SP2. I might have thrown it in the back here. Yes. Page SP1.1 shows the, the best overall view as regarding the trail and the Paint Creek. And when I look at, the, something I noticed at the last, in the meeting in December, is if these parking spaces are, I think you said nine by twenty is an official, is the size, this puts the, the northeast corner of the west wing approximately fifty feet from this blue that looks like the river. I'm, I'm not sure if that's the riverbank, or a guess, an estimate of how high it could go in a surge, or something like that. But the other corner, the patio alone looks to be somewhere between thirty and forty feet from the, from the river. So, I wonder two things. Is, is there any, anything in the plan to, to protect the embankment of the Paint Creek, like is done in Rochester Park with the chain, or chain-linked type wire over the rocks, those types of walls? But when we look at some of the projections on here, page A3.6, when it's looking into the V of the building from the north, I think you'd have to be standing either in the river or on the other, on the north bank to see it in this way. Sorry. So, how, how that relates to footprint and the river itself is protecting the river is really what I'm getting at. Also, in any of the stuff that we've seen so far, I don't, residents in this potential property are definitely going to want access to the trail. And I don't see them wanting to come out to the street, go to the crosswalk and come in, if they live anywhere in here. They're going to, they're going to want through access, some sort of one or two or more paths, probably two would do it, into the trail. And I, I think that that needs to be considered, that, that that's another potential change, or that's something that somebody would want to complain about when they moved in. The other thing is, I think the last is the strip of land that's between the trail and the west wing. From, in comparing it to the tandem parking spaces, if those are forty feet long, when we look at this strip of land between the, the west side of the parking spaces and the trail, that might be thirty feet. And as the gentleman with glasses and the hood mentioned, I think the depiction of the property is a little optimistic, or very optimistic, showing trees that are taller than the units. That's, that's not going to happen right away. So, yes, people are going to have a view of, of the property. I don't know what the plans are for what types of trees, but hopefully they're thick and fast-growing. The other, the last thing is hundred, or eighty-eight units, if there is an emergency, people have to get out in case of a fire, that's a pretty tiny area that could be a bottleneck in, in trying to funnel everybody in their vehicles, or however they have to go onto Woodward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I think what we're going to do is, presuming no more public comment, I'm not trying to cut anyone off, but if anyone else, yeah, we're going to go to the callers. So, if you don't mind patching them in, please.
I believe the phone number ending with 672. If you want to unmute yourself first.
Caller, you're on the air.
Maybe we can go to next? Give them a chance to unmute?
Sure.
If last name Reese would like to unmute themselves?
Yes. Hi, thank you, sorry, I'm in a hotel room here, I wasn't able to join in person, but thank you for letting me make a comment here. So this is very interesting. I appreciate the developer coming back and giving us a review of some of the changes that have been made. Some things I'd like to bring up, though, regarding the density calculation, is I will admit that I was the one that had brought up the density calculation of fourteen to sixteen units per acre, because for an RM2 designation, that is actually what the density calculation would be moving forward. And I understand that we still need to review the zoning regulations there. However, the, the developer is correct in saying that eighty-eight units would fit with our current RM2. But that's because of the way that our density calculations are calculated. Up to, up to two stories, each bedroom, each single bedroom has to have thirty-five hundred square feet, and every two-bedroom has to have forty-five hundred square feet of land area. As soon as you get to three stories, the game completely changes. Three stories and up, it becomes one thousand and two thousand square feet. So that's why they're able to put so much massing in this site with so many units, the type of density. And that is a very troubling situation. And what I'd like to bring up is, we talk very often about character within Rochester. I think that is a, that is a premier and fundamental aspect of the city that we live in. However, when you look at surrounding communities, this development could not be built in Rochester Hills. This development could not be built in Oakland Township. And this development, based on the size, could not be built in Royal Oak. Now, we talk about Royal Oak very often, but I just want to make people aware that the, with the calculations requiring in terms of height and land area, it could not be built there either. Okay? So why would we be considering this in the community of Rochester, where we talk about character so frequently? And then we're going to shoehorn a massive building that's as tall as a Walmart into an iconic piece of property that abuts the Paint Creek Trail, the Paint Creek, and directly across from our, our beloved City Park? Okay? When we talk about brownfield, how many years is it going to take for the city to begin to see tax money if a, if a brownfield is, if there's a brownfield grant? If we allow this, if we allow this development to go through, there is no going back. Okay? And that's a serious consideration. I've lived in Rochester since 2003, and I love our city. And I just, this is not the, I don't think that this is a proper location for this to take place. I'm all for, and I understand that we need housing that is, that can meet the needs of many other different types of people. But this location, we have other areas identified by the fire department over on Mill Street, those are much, much more appropriate locations for large-scale dense developments. But I am in strict opposition for trying to cram an eighty-eight-unit building onto this people property. So, you know, if there's anybody on the planning commission that feels that this is a good idea and that votes to move this forward, I will go back to what was said by McKenna, and I would like to understand why we would be deviating from the RT designation of the master plan. And I'd like to know what everybody's opinion is that votes in favor of this, and what is the change in society, what is the change in living conditions, or what is the significant change in the site itself that necessitates us from deviating from the well-thought-out, well-considered master plan that was put into place? So, thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Is there one more caller? Is she...
Yes.
Oh, hi.
Nancy Dawson.
Hi, Nancy. I'm sorry.
Hi.
Go ahead.
743 Ludlow. I've thoroughly enjoyed the discussion tonight and learned so much about why I live here. Two things. One, I believe there's not enough emphasis on what will happen to the Paint Creek when we start digging into the dirt, and I think we need to put a lot more emphasis on remediation or, or the long-term effects of the waterway. The second one is, I'm a gardener, and I know the, the terms will, lush landscape, you don't buy lush landscape. It takes twenty-five years to get a twenty-five-year-old tree. And it just doesn't make sense that we are going to plant these large trees in this area, because that, that doesn't happen. So thanks for considering all this, and thanks to my neighbors for showing up.
Thank you, Nancy. There was one more caller, is it? Was that it?
If the... Yep, if the caller with the phone number 672 would like to unmute themselves, you just hit star six to unmute.
Yeah, why don't we do a spam, I believe you had a...
Yes.
Yeah, if you don't mind, yep, and then we'll...
I just have a follow-up question a few speakers ago.
Sure.
With the pricing, what's the square footage of those units? Do you have those? I know you didn't answer the pricing. Okay. Do you have pricing? I mean, you have, you, so for example, the ones, the condos on Main, they are like eight-hundred-and-four square feet, went for a million. And those are luxury. So, I know you're, the woman back there spoke about not a million, that's kind of where I'm getting at. You were very quiet about the price, you got, I mean, you...
We don't, it's a process. We, we don't know where...
Estimation.
Okay.
We don't know where our costs are yet.
But based on square footage, based on the luxury condos in the area?
Yeah.
No, no, I don't think it'll be...
Ma'am, so what we don't want to do is turn this into an interrogation question.
Oh, no, I was just asking, yeah.
And I get it, but if you want to make some comments, just in general about, you're concerned about pricing, you're concerned about market price, et cetera, that's one thing, but I don't want to turn this into, you know, putting the developer...
I understand.
Because it's just, that's not the time. At the public hearing, absolutely, but now this is just public...
Yeah, no, my main thing was the square footage, and, because you can kind of base pricing off square footage.
Sure you can, right.
So just, I know, that was a, a question and statement earlier, so I just wanted to ask that.
Thank you. Okay. Is that pretty much it for public comment? If there's anything else that hasn't been said that you would like to add, we would certainly listen, but I can, on behalf of the other commissioners, I think we get the theme and understand the concern from the public. Is that fair? And is there anyone else online? Did that young lady figure out?
Chairman Hauser, there's, there's one more gentleman, last name Zella-Fro.
Yeah, hey there, sorry, I was there in person and then had to leave to get home to Petz. But Mark Zella-Fro, I live at 392 Winry Drive, and I back up to Dinosaur Hill. And just kind of echoing what everyone said earlier, but really, building off what Nancy said, like I'm an avid fisherman, I'm always in Paint Creek when the season is open fishing. The DNR just stocked almost ten thousand brown trout in Paint Creek, laid in fifteen-hundred there in Municipal Park, fifteen-hundred trout at Tinkin Road, fifteen-hundred at Dutton Road, so on and so forth, moving up the Paint Creek. So like, my biggest concern and wonder for the commission is, again, like what will that do to the streams? What will that do to the fish and like wildlife in the stream? And then again, just the surrounding wildlife, the deer in the park, the deer in the, like, Dinosaur Hill and in the park, and just, yeah, the nature all around, and just building on and echoing, hey, like, make that area an extension of the park and turn it into, again, it could be another pavilion, another facility that you guys can rent out as an event space, as another pavilion, still have a source of income for the community and for the city, but really keeping the, again, nature and kind of wildlife at the center, or, again, what impact will it have to the stream and fish and wildlife?
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Okay. All right. So, having heard from the applicant, the developer, and having heard from the public, both in person and online, I think at this point, the commissioners will probably, you know, want to talk a little bit amongst ourselves and then decide what we're going to do moving forward. Is that fair? Okay. So I would open it up to the commissioners, if you have any comments, anything like you'd say now, if you'd like to say now, that's certainly fine.
Mr. Chairman, can I help a little bit?
Yeah, of course, yeah, please.
So this is going to be a little different than normal.
Right.
This is not just a site plan.
This is not just a site plan. This needs a rezoning. And this needs a conditional rezoning according to what the applicant has proposed. So, if we were to take action, we can't turn a site plan review, I don't think, in thirty days. It depends on, Vidya's got to review a site plan, because we all agree that a conditional zone, we want the site plan brought with it, so you would know what the conditions are that they're doing. So, whatever action you take, it would be at the next available meeting. Once we get all the data we need, good points, talk about river stabilization plans, everything but brownfield, that's got nothing to do with site plan. But we would want to make sure we have all the data so that Vidya could review this properly to make a recommendation. At that time, staff will make a recommendation as to what we think of the rezoning, the conditional zone. And then, again, the process would be conditional zone here, an application, I'm sorry, a recommendation for denial or approval would go to City Council, they would act. If, in fact, they approve the rezoning, the site plan would come back here for evaluation to be approved. So, we can't do anything without approved zoning. So, a bunch of steps yet for everybody. And we would be, you know, I know, we'd have to give everybody plenty of notice and send out, if, in fact, it happened in March, we wanted to have the public hearing, we'll let everybody know in advance. We have fifteen days, we've got to have it in the paper, takes ten days before that to get it in the paper. So, it's a tight schedule, but we'll make sure we communicate with everybody, but that's the next steps.
No, and I appreciate you saying that, because I know there's some confusion, and everyone wants to know, how does this work? And just to be clear, for all of us, it doesn't stop with us. It ultimately is going to end up in front of City Council, and they're going to have the last word on that. So, although we can make recommendations and certainly approve, it's not the final step here. It's going to go to a level above us. So, to that end, I guess I would ask you, Mr. Banda, if there's any, you know, guidance that you can give us as to how to move forward? Is this something you would want to see in April? Is this something in May?
So, this is, so Vidya, Vidya, are you still on?
Yes.
All right. So, the pressure's going to be on Vidya. The rezoning's easy. That's, we just make a report on that. But to do a conditional rezone, you have to basically review the site plan.
Okay.
Because that's what you're, they're going to ask this body and the City Council, based on this site plan, that's how we want you to do it. So, it can't deviate from the site plan. So, that site plan's got to be extremely thoroughly reviewed. That usually takes more than a couple of weeks. So, Vidya, if you want to weigh in, how much time you would need to do that?
I can review all projects based on whatever timeline the city wants me to, but I just want to make a clarification with regard to conditional rezoning. For the members of the audience too, and the planning commission, a rezoning is not the same as a conditional rezoning. They are completely different things. In case of a regular rezoning, we just see whether it complies with the master plan or not. In case of a conditional rezoning, the property is being conditionally rezoned to a district the applicant is asking for, and the conditions have to be voluntarily offered by the applicant. The planning commission and the City Council cannot make or put any conditions on the request for a conditional rezoning. Under state law, all of the conditions have to be offered by the applicant, and the city can either accept them or reject them. So, this will not be a situation where the applicant provides a list of conditions that they are willing to impose, and then the planning commission says, we would like this additional restriction to be placed. That cannot be done. So, I just want to make that clarification. This is not the same as a regular rezoning. A conditional rezoning is a completely different tool. So, that said, when the applicant submits the project with the timeline for public hearing notice, which under state law is a minimum of fifteen to thirty days before a meeting, I would say I need at least three weeks in order to be able to review the whole thing and get it in time for the packet to the city to be distributed and posted on the website.
April.
Yeah. And so, Mr. Banda, to that effect, what Vidya was saying, so, to the public, when you heard us talk about the storage, you know, we had said, okay, we'll give you this if you move it over to the east side, if you put the maze, we can't do that. Everything has to be presented by the applicant. They come to us and say, here's what we're willing to do, A, B, C, D, E, and F, and we either accept it or reject it. They can't come to us with proposal, and we say, that looks great, but if you do X, Y, and Z, then you're fine. That's not how this process works. So, I want to make sure that everyone understands that, you know, it's up to the applicant to submit what their conditional rezoning is. We have nothing to do with it, and as you heard, state law precludes us from getting involved in that. Okay? Ms. King, go ahead.
So, we're talking a lot about the process.
Yes.
To approve the conditional rezoning. Do we even have support from the planning commission to move this forward? We've had, how many emails over the past, you know, weeks? We have a twelve-hundred-person petition against this project. We've heard from a lot of the citizens here tonight, I think, some very valid points that this goes against the master plan. Do we even have support to move this forward, or are we wasting time?
Right. So, under the agenda here, the purpose of today's.
We would set a public hearing if we're supportive. We don't have to set a public hearing. We can say, no.
We don't. Stop here.
Well, once they apply, they have the right to go through the process. They have not officially applied, because we asked them not to.
Right.
So, they could get feedback. But if they apply, we have to.
By law, you have to do it.
We can't not just say we're going to look at it. You can deny it, but you can't deny accepting their application.
Right. We have to give them an opportunity to be heard if they apply. That's, and whether we like it or we don't, or we know it's never going to pass, just so everyone understands, if they apply, we have to provide them an opportunity to be heard. Okay? So, that's why I had said earlier when we started today, this isn't going to decide everything. It doesn't mean it's going to happen or not. It's just, again, we have to comport with the process. So, to that question, I don't know, Nick, do we just have them go apply or?
Right. So, what would happen normally would be, because there is a site plan involved, they would apply, and then the first meeting even, not the public hearing, the first meeting would be looking at the site plan, what they voluntarily asked us for. Vidya would say, I have everything that I need to review the site plan that goes with the conditional zone. Then, at that next meeting, and that could happen, because she's got all the stuff for March, no, we're too late now.
April.
For April. And then, April, we could say, we have everything we need, like we always do, and I'll set the public hearing for May for the rezoning, conditional zone. Make a decision, that meeting or not, on the council's back.
So, in plain English, then?
Sorry.
So, in plain English. Conceptually, we don't have to do anything tonight.
Correct.
Okay. So, we don't have to do anything, as commissioners. The applicant can go back, heard what was said, prepare a site plan, and submit it for approval.
I guess I was confused, because this says set a public hearing.
Right. I know. I'm reading that as well. Yes. So, that's what I thought as well.
So, is that not?
Mr. City Attorney?
Oh, please, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I thought we were going to vote tonight to have a public hearing. Is that, what you're saying is we don't have to do that?
Well, that's correct, because according to what Nick said, this is just a consideration of this project. So, you don't have to set it until they actually submit their application officially. I mean, these are conceptual drawings, very detailed and thorough, but this is not necessarily a trigger to have a public hearing set after today, or set tonight. So, I suppose you could, if it's set out far enough, to let the site plan come in. But I don't know if you're, you're probably there yet. That's not mine.
And then, are we going to consider the site plan and the rezoning at the same time?
For the conditional.
Because it's conditional.
A conditional rezoning, yeah.
Yeah. Those are two separate votes versus simultaneous?
Well, it's, it would be a separate vote. In fact, you're not, this board doesn't vote on the rezoning, it sends it up to City Council.
Right.
That's the body that approves.
I thought this vote, I thought this board voted first and had to go through this board to get to the City Council.
It's not an up or down vote, like the zoning ordinances. This would be a zoning map, is the way I'm looking at it. But this is not a thumbs up, thumbs down, because it's ultimately, you don't have a right to say no.
To a zoning.
To a zone, to a rezoning request. It's only City Council that has the right to say yes or no.
So, just another question. So, could the City Council, in theory, schedule a meeting to vote on that next week?
To set a public hearing? You have to have a public hearing at this body for.
It's a two-step process.
Yes. And I would, and I would say, we've heard a lot about conditional zone, and Vidya said it well. What the applicant would do then is there's actually a document they would prepare, it says, statement of conditions, that's recordable form, lays all these things out. They did it in here, generally, like, here's what we would do, limited to thirty-eight feet high, you know, limited to X amount. So, they would have to put that all in there, and that's where it gets to the yes or no. We can't say, oh, yeah, but you have to do, you know, limit it, reduce this many. So, that's, it's an actual recordable document with a register of deeds that is on file with the world. And if they don't then do that project, then it actually reverts back to the current zoning.
Right. What makes it seem more confusing is the way we normally would handle this was through the special projects.
Right.
This is not eligible for a special project. The developer, we had hoped, we had planned on this being a special project, Dylan and Upton had this, but it didn't get into the master plan. So, they've had to go through this untraditional conditional zone, because they're, we do not have the opportunity for a special project on the site.
Right. Mr. Hamorsky, did you have a comment?
Well, we are looking for clarity in process, like you guys are. I'm familiar with process and all the twists and turns. But to be frank, we're not sure where we stand. We know where the residents stand, but this is a very expensive process and very time-consuming.
I get it.
We're glad to continue to invest if there's a reason to do so, but we need something in the process to get some feedback from, you know, planning. I don't know if you're still going to discuss this, you know, you're discussing process. Now, I don't know if you're going to discuss the merits of our request yet tonight, so we have some idea of whether, you know, where you're heading or straw, I don't know how to phrase it, but we have.
I just want clarity here for myself. The process starts with you submitting a site plan, is that correct?
I don't, I think it's.
Is that correct, Nick?
Submitting an application for the conditional rezone tied to the conditions, and I don't know if it's exactly tied to a specific site plan, because that's more like a PUD process in other cities, or I guess your special projects. So, I don't know if you can take a rezoning on a list of conditions, or whether the list of conditions needs to match a graphic portion as well. We're looking for direction.
Right.
We can do it either way.
Right. So, in the past, we've actually entertained an applicant to come in here just to discuss, you know, just, hey, let me throw these things against the wall regarding this property. We said, we really don't want to do that. We'd rather have you submit a site plan so that we have clarity and direction. So, I don't think it's appropriate for us to sit here and give our opinion on what's been presented if the process is not started. What's the point? So, how do we start the process? If that's the intent?
I think in most cases, though, there's not a zoning change required with it, right? It's truly a site plan.
Yeah. So, I might be able to help. So, we've only done this once before, when they first changed the law, and that was on one thousand university, Vito Pampalonas buildings. They, before Vito bought them, the developer came in and said, I want to get rid of the office buildings, but I want to put up senior housing. So, they, the only way to do that was to go to a conditional zone to RM1, and we went through that process. So, they had to bring in their site plan, we had to review the site plan, have it basically ready to go, agreed, submitted by, voluntarily by the developer, got it ready to go, then attached that to the rezoning. Same process here. So, dog, you have to spend more money to get this to where Vidya can approve a site plan, because that document will be the actual condition. It's going to be page SP1-A is architecture, and L is landscaping. That's the conditions. They're not just necessarily in writing, because that doesn't mean anything.
Right.
I'm going to plant twenty-foot trees. What kind of trees? How deep, we need the detail. So, next step is a detailed site plan, and then a rezoning application with the conditions.
What you're looking for, though, is, you're looking for a head nod or something, right? Is that what you're saying?
Temperature.
We are looking for, we need to know if we'd be welcome here. From taking notes, the neighbors don't want us here.
Well, you're always welcome.
We need to see if the city would like us here. We, to be just frank, we're a little, we're a bit astounded at the intensity of the negativity of our proposal. We understand everything we've heard, and I'm not disagreeing with it, but we are a bit amazed. And so, we need to know where we're going. One other process issue is that if we do rezon in April to City Council in May, back to you with a site plan in June, then a formal, I mean, this is going to take six months. We had, I think, a discussion and a thought where we would submit, our team is working on the site plan package with your checklist of needs as we speak, civil engineers, all the members. We could submit that, frankly, next week with the conditional zoning. We could be ready for the March meeting, other than if Vidya would have enough time. So, let's say April, just for, just for discussion. If we submitted the full everything, Vidya had all the weeks she needed, what we would at least hope for is that you would take action on the rezone request, the conditional rezoning request, recommendation, not recommendation, and the recommendation would be conditioned upon the site plan, which would get reviewed next, an acceptable site plan. Then, you'd vote on the site plan, both at the same meeting, and then that would both go to Council for action, and everything conditioned upon each other, the site plan and the conditional rezoning request.
Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, so, it's not that far off. So, agreed. So, you've got two things you could do. You could come in and say, design a site plan to RT, look at the present RZ, not the RT that might exist down the line, and design it, come in and ask for a rezoning and a site plan. The way we would normally handle that would be what you said, full site plan approval. Then, this body could say, we accept the site plan that you voluntarily, in this case, voluntarily gave us, and then conditioned on a rezoning. So, we could do it in one meeting. We could do site plan and rezoning in one, but it's conditional on the full rezoning, which then is City Council's call. Can you read, Patrick? Yeah. I think that's the way.
Well, and if I can supplement, to go further, I mean, if City Council is going to be acting on a conditional rezone, let's be honest, City Council is going to say, what is it that you want approved? What do you, I mean, because without the actual site plan in front of City Council, they're going to say, how do we give a conditional rezone? Here's the conditions, we can read those on paper, but we don't have a site plan that's even been vetted. Why, why would we go through this process of rezoning if we don't know what we're, what the end game is going to be? So, I actually like the idea, from a process standpoint, of kind of having them go together, because you can approve the site plan with one of the conditions being if they get conditional rezoning at City Council.
And I'll go one step further. If something you submitted didn't even meet RM2, then we can't even, we can't even, Vidya couldn't recommend approved site plan, because it doesn't even meet what you're asking for. So, we have to, the only way to vet that is to get all the information, like, say, a full site plan, checklist filled out, boom, she can review that and go that route.
I don't, obviously, the public understands kind of, you know, how this isn't as simple as an up or down.
Making sausage here.
Yeah, that's exactly right, and you don't want to see the sausage made. So, the reality is, and this is only from my own personal view, is I'm a little reluctant to start opining about my personal thoughts as it pertains to this project without something more formal being submitted. Okay? It's one thing to come in here and say, hey, I've got an idea for this particular spot, or, hey, I've got some conceptual plans for a location town. But I think based upon the nature of this particular project, the feedback you've received from the city, I'm sorry, the residents and everyone else, I think this warrants, you know, another step in the process on the part of the applicant, is to go through the formal channels that you normally would. So, that would be my thought process. And lady and gentleman, I don't know what you think, but that's, I'm certainly willing to discuss certain things.[1762.51] I'm certainly willing to, to discuss certain things. But I, I do feel we owe it to the applicant to move this forward. We owe it to the residents to move it forward. But I want to make sure we do it the right way, completely transparent. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I, I mean, to me, the, the, the site plan, I, I guess you have to have a site plan to be able to vote on it. I mean, to me, my personal opinion is, is the, the zoning is the
Right.
is, is where the action is, I guess. And, you know, ultimately that's going to be at city council and, you know, I, I can't, I can and won't say how I think the city council is going to vote.
Right.
I might have, I might have an idea, but, because I'm part of the city council, but.
And if I could, pardon me, if I could clarify, again, in our process, planning commission may choose to not recommend. And city council may override planning commission and approve something not recommended by planning.
Sure.
Is that the case here or potentially?
It could be vice versa. We could say no, and they could, that's right.
The answer is yes.
And then the opposite, you could love the thing and council says, no way, I was asked.
Okay. Okay.
I, I think our, our, still our, gosh, as respectful as it can be. I mean, this is tens of thousands of dollars weekly to move this along for us and, and we don't mind that for a goal, but if, if we're going to go off a cliff anyhow, we sure would like to know as soon as possible.
I don't disagree with that. I, I, I feel like this is not the application that somebody's just throwing something against the wall.
Right.
Coming in with really not much of a thought. Like we've seen a few of those in the past. I feel like this is much more of an investment that's been made, that continues to be made. The most, the most comprehensive and thought through proposal that we've had so far in this property. And I think they've been before us a number of times where we should, in my opinion, give some level of thought and input to them. That's my opinion.
We would deeply appreciate that.
You might not like the opinion.
You want to start?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, go ahead. The floor is yours, man.
Well, you know, I, I guess what I would say is, and this is probably not going to help you too much, but I am really torn on this one. I do respect the master planning process, which has a certain designation for this property, which is not what is before us. And, and so on the one hand, I respect that. On the other hand, I don't think that RT, my opinion, is the right move for this piece. Throwing a couple duplexes on this property makes no sense to me whatsoever. Nor does leaving it industrial, vacant, contaminated, right up against the trail. There's nothing, and, and it makes no sense to me to say, okay, let's just turn the lights back on and fire up the plant again and everybody's going to be happy. You know, maybe a few residents on the street would be happy, but the greater community, I don't think would be happy with that. And it's not going to be a park. I know people would love to see it be a park and just extend dinosaur hill. It's not going to be a park because that's going to take tax dollars. Somebody's got to buy that, you know, and it's just, it's probably, you know, not feasible to, to even think or hope for that. So, you know, I'm left with looking at what is in the surrounding area. You know, you've got the DPW yard, you transition from that through to apartments, Dillon and Upton, and then ultimately the single family. So there is a transition of land use happening there. So then you say, okay, well, what would be appropriate to fit in there? Would some level of multifamily make sense there? In my opinion, it, it does. I think that would be okay. So then you're back to questioning the size, the scale, the density and all of that. And I know I gave my opinion at the last couple meetings, that four stories was, to me, it was just too dense. It was the massing that just for me did not work. I, I, although I, I understand concerns of traffic. You know, I understand that traffic is not necessarily generated on that street. It's everything passing through. It's when Oakland township grows. It's when everybody passing through the town grows, there's more and more cars on the road. So, you know, that's going to happen over time regardless of what happens here. If it's an industrial building that's filled with, you know, workers, or if it's a, a multifamily development. So the traffic concerns me less. I've looked at SEMCOG and data relative to traffic incidents on the street. I don't believe that there's a significant accident pattern that happens there despite the trail crossing. I think it's, and I, I drive it all the time and I think it's very respected. I use the trail. It's respected. It could certainly be improved and obviously would need to with adding, you know, this development or something like it. So, you know, I say all of those things. I, I think it's a, it's a nice development. I think it looks good. I question whether or not it's, it's too dense. I don't like the tandem parking, you know, situation. It feels just stuffed on the site. I think now with the change in, in parking that we have on the site, you've got parking spaces that are now up against the trail that will be facing, you know, head in on the trail. I don't necessarily like that. So, you know, there's some, I, again, I go back to, I'm just, I'm torn. I, I, I think we could do a lot worse with a redevelopment here or keeping it as it is. And I think you gotta, you gotta think about that, you know? And I know we see a lot of people coming in with negative thoughts, you know, and they're all good thoughts and, and I respect all of them. And normally the people that show up are the ones that, you know, are impacted most and are concerned, you know? The people that would be for it, typically you don't hear from them, you know, unfortunately. I've asked a few folks just around town and, you know, I don't get the negative energy that I do from everyone here on the development for, for what that's worth. I wish we would, could go back to the master plan process and have this pointed conversation with the specific development. And, and be able to hear what the greater community's thought is specifically on this, you know? But we can't do that, you know? I mean, I wish they all showed up, but they don't. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
I'm torn. I wish I can give you more specific direction.
There's one. Thank you very much. That's very helpful.
Richard, you got thoughts?
Yeah, I actually have a couple of concerns myself. You know, first, compliment you on the fact that you've done such a professional and thorough presentation, but my biggest concern with this is what I'll refer to as the footprint, what some of the other folks have referred to as a footprint. You know, I've done some calculations here and I'll be honest, I'm not sure if these, you know, I've got a, a clear picture, but as an example, you're saying that the piece of property is 165,800 square feet approximately and it's going to, you, you need 145,000. Is that just the building? Is that building in parking? You know, if it is, if, if it includes parking, that takes up 80%, 87% of that property. And then I started to take a look at the actual, the site map and maybe the scale is lost because it's been reduced. But I take a look at a couple of things. You know, the building's V-shaped and when you take a look at the point, that's almost connecting the two buildings, it appears to be 10 feet wide. And then if you go to the, the, the point where the buildings are farthest apart, it's like 30 feet wide. Which to me is very, very small. And I've got some concerns about, you know, how much green space is truly available in this, in this project. Take a look at another thing. The, again, if the scale on the document here, SP1 dot one is, is, is accurate, the crosswalk is only like 50 feet from the driveway. I don't know if that's good or bad. I'm not a traffic engineer, but to me, that's a concern because it's so close. Another thing is, I was the person that brought up the landscape issue at the last meeting. And I speak from experience because of the subdivision that I live in. I'm the guy that's going and fixing the problems, the mistakes that were made 20 years ago. Along the Paint Creek Trail, it's about 200, the building's about 280 feet long, okay? And depending upon which trees you want to count, there looks like there's anywhere from 42 to 48. That leaves you less than 10 feet of spacing between trees. The problem that I'm fixing is that in my subdivision, trees were planted eight feet on center. If you have evergreens, they're going to kill each other. And in 10, 12 years, it's going to look, you're going to have a lot of dead branches. It's not going to look good. And in about 15 or 20 years, you're going to have to replace all of that. Right now, it costs me about $1,200 a tree to replace. If you've got 48 trees here, somewhere along the line, whoever the condo association is or property manager is, is going to have to spend over $50,000 in today's dollars to fix that problem. Which kind of gets back to some of the things that the folks have said here, that it's going to take 20 years to, you know, get those trees to the appropriate height. Well, no, it's not. It's going to take 40 years because if you make the mistake now, you're going to have to go back and fix it later. So we may never see in our lifetime what was really intended.
Yeah, if I could offer a clarification, we don't, we don't have a detailed landscape plan yet.
Yes.
But there's lower landscape material that would, for a jogger on the trail, that would effectively screen. Doesn't have to be a 20 foot high tree. And then the trees, you know, are for canopy and higher up. And, and the main point we were trying to make is that the, there's a, there's a lot of 50 and 60 foot trees already there. Around on both sides of the trail. If you go to the apartment complex to the west, I, I'd give anyone $1,000 if they'd ever see this building. It's, it's just not going to be visible. And walking on the trail, we select plant material, not just trees with trunks, but landscape material that would effectively screen low and high.
Right. And I suspect that would be the process, but those are the concerns that I have right now.
I understand that, yeah. And we, previous developments we have in here and other places, landscaping is a perpetual maintenance issue. But, but that, that's our vision. We don't, we don't intend to make the community wait 20 years while landscape fills in down at the human level. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sarah, Thomas?
I, so I struggle with the request for rezoning, given, one, the, the work that was done on the master plan, to the particular location of this property. I do recognize our, our older apartment buildings, you know, in the area. I think they have somewhat smaller scale. First of all, I, I think this property is beautiful, what you guys have designed. I, I actually really, really enjoy it. I just struggle with, is this the right place for it? In the city, I think there were some really strong points made about our housing stock. I know the master plan, we, we called out that we need, it's called middle housing, I think we called it, we referenced. And, and we have the single family homes and we have the very large developments. Maybe a couple in process that we've approved, or maybe their site plans have expired, but they might come back. But we really haven't seen a whole lot. There are the kind of brownstones going in on Main at a high cost, but we haven't seen a lot in the middle that addresses that. And I think we were very strategic in our planning process, that that is a, a big need for the city. And I just don't see this filling that need. I, I think it's beautiful. I, I'm not naive to think that these are going to be low cost units. I don't think that necessarily attracting people who have homes in other areas and are spending part of the year here is going to be a significant value add to our community in terms of, you know, using our, our retail locations, using our restaurants, adding to our, our schools and other, you know, institutions in the city. I don't see them adding a ton of value. I don't think that's where our focus really needs to be. I think that focusing on supporting families, housing that can, can fit families. Two bedrooms at 1,000 square feet. I used to live in a one bedroom, 1,000 square feet in Chicago. I could not imagine, even if you added a second bedroom, doing that with kids, it's, it's tight. So I just, it's not the site plan. I know things change when you get into site plan and we've seen it happen and, and we've gotten there on projects, but I just have some very realistic concerns. I think you've heard from a lot of people in the community. Now, the, the project has changed quite a bit and maybe some views could change a little. I just, I, I want to be realistic because I know it's a lot of time and cost on your end. I want to be respectful, but I think there's, it's a great project, but I don't know that it fits here in this space.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. So I appreciate all the effort that went in to revise the plan from November the 7th. So when I look at the site plan, you know, you're right next to Paint Creek Trail, which is heavily used for biking, jogging and running, walking, sorry. But I don't see your site being connected to it on what's proposed here. I don't see, one of the folks in the crowd mentioned it too. Where is the connecting path? There's not a whole lot of walkability on your site. You show us a barbecue area that's connected to the building in two different ways. But I don't see a whole lot that doesn't require me as a condo owner to walk across a parking lot, step through some cars potentially, or around a whole ton of trees and, and make it to the trail. I assume over time, some sort of dirt path, common use trail would exist. From my daily going on and off, I'd wear down the grass. I look at the parking on the site. I, I agree with multiple comments that it's somewhat of a disaster. The double stack inside the buildings and then putting a bunch of people, again, near the trail. Not sure if that can be reworked. You know, I, the current use, or the, the current facility that is on this site, you know, I, I also use this area of the street to drive down multiple times a week. It's, it's dated, it needs to go. My company and my, my day job, we build industrial buildings and this building would never have any one of significance or consequence that this community would want to come in there. It has a low clear height. It's been a multiple additions through time. It's well polluted and has some challenges there. And again, we appreciate, at least as a community, your willingness to clean that up and make it a better site. The architecture I like. I just think the massing is, is still too big. I don't know if it can go from 88 units down to 50, if that's still mathematically possible. But it's maybe something slightly smaller. And then, you know, one reservation I have, you know, someone out in the audience asks, what are these, are going to cost? You say in here a few times, they're going to be luxury units. You've heard from multiple people up here. We've had numerous consultants that Nick has brought in before us and consultants say there's a lack of housing that, you know, is like 300,000, 400,000 in value. I, I would love to hear you tell me that that's what this will be. I can't imagine it will be though, based on construction costs in the current market. I have one question for Nick. The applicant or the developer has submitted something that says 38 feet to parapet. The new developed structures or houses along both Ludlow and Woodward. What is like the max height on some of these mega mansions that have gone?
So in theory, it's 25 feet, but it's how you measure it. So architects have got very good at figuring out how to slide that scale. So it's, if it's a gable roof, you go halfway up the gable from the ground and that's where you measure 25 feet. I guarantee you, there's some homes on Ludlow that are 35, 38 feet tall. But when you, the way you fix it, you spread the roof. The new one's going on 7th and Wilcox. Look how tall that is. But they spread the gable and then when you go up, you can keep going up higher. It's like for every three feet you go up higher, you only pick up one foot in height. So a parapet, what they're talking about, it's easy. You just go to the top of the parapet and measure straight.
So in reality, this building would fit in with some of the new mega houses.
It's not much taller than some of the new ones.
Right. To me, it's just, it's a whole lot of building on a tiny little site. Not a lot of walkability, some parking challenges. But I, I, I like the direction from the last meeting to this.
One thing we were hoping for, it's right of way property, but we would hope to, you know, add a sidewalk from our entry over to the trail. But I, we don't know what point in time would be to introduce that.
So I could address that.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
So the, the piece of land that you do reference in here, yes, you are under contract with the trail itself to use that land, correct?
Well, yeah, that wasn't the one I was just talking about though.
Right, but I wanted to clarify, you know, all this talk about creating paths from your property to the trail, the trail will not allow you to do that. So we should just clear that up.
It needs connectivity though, to be a part of the, the community.
The trail will never approve that.
The trail might not allow it, but that doesn't mean there won't be natural footpaths created.
Understood.
Yeah.
Formally approved.
I think that was what somebody made a comment of earlier.
We're talking out about at, at the road.
Okay.
A sidewalk.
Okay.
Five feet back from a curb, or 10 feet, or whatever, not like in the middle of the trail. So, but it's the least detail of all the things we're needing to discuss.
Understood. It just keeps coming up. So, I just thought I'd clarify that. But, okay, thank you.
Any further comments that you want to make about the?
The only thing I struggle with is, since we've started this discussion, it always leads with, we always led with, I need conditional rezoning. We never really got to take a look at the site plan on its own. It's always, oh, by the way, I'm coming to you for conditional rezoning. And then, look at the site plan. That's the part I struggle with. Because I don't think it fits with the master plan as we have it now.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. First, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. And I'd also like to thank the developer, one, for a professional job, but, two, they could have had this meeting last month. None of our people are gone, so they agreed to do this. We appreciate that, to make sure that everybody was here and everybody out there. You know, as I said before, you know, I sat through a million meetings on the master plan. And we just did that. And so, it's difficult for me to say, well, we're not going to do that now. So, that's one thing. And I think it's, and as I said in the last meeting, I think it's really big for this spot. So, you know, I have issues with that, to just be very clear. And, you know, you want a rezoning, then you're gonna have, you know, you're gonna have to come to the city council. And then, if you ask for that, then the city council has the right to have their opinion. So, to me, it's, this is a difficult project for you to be successful with. Again, you know, I want to see the final thing, and you know that. You know, one thing I keep hearing is, you know, I have a little different take on this, is, you know, these are too expensive and things. And it's like, and I live in a smaller house in town. But, you know, Rochester is the place we all want to be. Rochester is booming, and that's why it's so expensive to live here. And I don't know if we can kind of social engineer some of that away. You know, they're building Bigfoot houses on my street because I think it's a really nice street and a nice place to live. And I might not like it exactly. But to me, that's the success of Rochester. So, yeah, we want to try to get more, you know, families in here. But, you know, somebody wants to build an expensive house. That's just, to me, the market dictating that this is a great place to live. And so, I, you know, disagree maybe a little bit. But it's very difficult to change the zoning, and it's awfully big.
I guess at least me to tell you how I kind of feel about this so far, sir. And I think, listening to all the points of view, which I respect highly, I'm probably aligned most with Commissioner Lord in this, in that I believe that, and I mean this in the nicest way, Mr. Rush, but the site probably could use some help, okay? And it could use some improvement there. I've been inside, so I know what it's like in there through the police department, okay? So, I know, I didn't break in one night. I was there as a guest from the police, okay? I promise you. So, the idea is, is, yeah, it's a little bit tired. And to the people in the public here, something is going to be in that spot one day, okay? And it's up to us to figure out what is the best solution to what is currently there, okay? We can't say no to everything, because then it becomes stagnant. We can't say yes to everything, because then it becomes overdeveloped. So, we try and find that balance of the two ends to say, what's the best use for this particular property based on all these different factors? And, yes, it's a beautiful design. I like it. I think it's a great idea. I also am very well aware of the opposition. I live right around the corner. I see the blue signs in all the, in the front yards, and I get it. And I have to also respect that this is private property, and this is a gentleman's property that he wants to sell. This is not going to be a park, okay? It's going to be way, way too expensive for the city to buy this and turn it into green space. There's environmental issues. The cost to mitigate and clean the property up and abate, it's astronomical. So, that's not going to happen. And I also agree with Mr. Lord, that I don't think you're going to see three houses there either. That's just, no developer is going to buy that property for the cost that it would be sold for to build three or four houses. It's non-sustainable. So, is there a balance in there somewhere? I'd like to think there is. And I may differ a little bit on the size, et cetera. Could it be smaller? Yes. But then, you're going to run into issues. Well, can I do it at 60 units? Probably not. You know, 88 is probably cutting in right at the margin there. So, and I'm not going to repeat everything about the master deed. I was in those, in the master plan, I was in those meetings as well. So, you kind of have an idea where I'm at, maybe. But, you know, you've got some good ideas, but I certainly appreciate and recognize what has been voiced through the public here. So, I don't know if that helps you at all, but...
Yeah. This last 20 minutes has been the most helpful of all of our visits.
Good. All right, then.
I didn't like anything anyone said, but we heard it.
We'll start over for you.
We heard it, and we're glad to hear something more than process discussion.
Okay.
Remember, you got two other commissioners that are not here today.
Yeah, there's two others, yeah, who are not here tonight. So, the chairman and Mr. Gass.
And they were our favorites last time.
Right.
One was an architect. Where's he when I need him?
Okay. So, I don't know if that gives you any guidance moving forward. I will say, just for purposes of clarity, and because I want to make sure there's equal time for everyone, I do note that there's two hands up on the board. I feel like I should at least ask them if they have something to say because they've been waiting. So, to the extent that we could let one or two of them talk right now, obviously not at the same time, but...
I think that's that 672 number.
Yes. Number 672, please go.
Can you hear me?
Now, we can, yes.
All right. Sorry about the background here. I feel a little frustrated with the meeting.
Ma'am, sir?
For, anybody else?
Excuse me, ma'am. I'm going to have to ask you if, we have a very, very bad connection. It's very hard to hear you. I don't know if you want to retry?
No. Can you hear me?
No.
Better?
No, it's probably worse. So, if you want to send an email to the city, ma'am, if you want to just send an email to the city, address it to Nick Banda, and he will distribute it to the members of the Planning Commission, okay? I'm not trying to cut you off, but we can't hear you. Thank you.
Okay. I've seen his reactions at meetings. I will send it to everybody, but I just want to bring up the parking. I don't think it was discussed enough. Just so everybody's aware, it's a 176 parking spot. If they have one child, and everyone simply parking up in the downtown district.
Okay. Ma'am, thank you. We understand the parking is an issue, but in order to keep an accurate record of the minutes, we need to hear what you're saying. So, we'll ask you to put that in an email, send it to the city. They will distribute it. We will review it, and it will be incorporated into the notes of this meeting. Correct, Mr. Banda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Is that all we have for the callers?
It's God, it's not a girl.
Okay, I'm sorry. It just goes to show how bad the connection was. I did not mean to confuse the gender. I'm very serious. I did not mean to do that. I was told it was a...
Breaking up.
Yes. To the members of the public, I did not do that on purpose. I promise you, okay? All right. Okay, I think we are all set on this particular issue. We are going to then move on, is that right, to the next issue, which is 6B. Thank you, everyone, by the way. Thank you for your civility and your respect. There's still much more to go, so you don't have to leave. 6B, Discussion to amend Article 11, the Central Business District.
Okay, I'm going to take this one, so it counts.
Everyone, though, if you could please be quiet. We still have a meeting in progress.
Give them a second to clear.
All right, that's fine.
Up until the last two minutes, I was going to say, great job tonight.
Close is a good setup.
I know.
Okay. All right. So, this item is a Discussion to amend Article 11, CBD, Central Business District. And I gave you a little preview of this before. We were approached by, happens to be Mr. Roger Knapp, who's on the DDA. But this has been something, I think Roger's been a property owner of this town, Main Street, for years. He was a former mayor. He has a passion for this town. And in his travels, and really, I think in Birmingham, actually, he noticed lately that the worry that the merchants and the Downtown Development Authority and the Principal Shopping District has is the more you start taking out general services on the first floor of downtowns, any core downtown, that be a beauty salon as a service center, a medical spa as a service center, people that walk in the door does well. Anybody that closes at 5:00, and I know our retailers do that, but a general office usually closes around 5:00. And you can see it, we have the busiest, the mayor pointed this out, a couple of meetings. This has been the busiest season we've ever had. But you can see on our most important block, probably our most prominent block, from 4th to 3rd, on one side of the street, there's black windows at night for 100 feet because they're realtors. They have to be realtors there. So, it started finally getting to Mr. Knapp. He went to the Downtown Development Board, got support there. They're going to send a resolution in support to this board. And the concept is simply this. We looked at Main Street at first, the whole Central Business District. So, Attorney Crotte helped us write an ordinance based on other ordinances. A lot of core downtowns do this. You can only have retail or service industries on the first floor. Not that we don't want offices or anything like that, but put them on the second floor. Banks count as service industries, because they have walk-ins, right? Things like that. So, we took a draft at this ordinance to start with, and we had all of Central Business District. As we looked at it, talked to some of the business owners, the side streets, we don't care about. It doesn't affect the aura of Main Street if you're on the side streets and have alternate uses. Now, the ordinance also in CBD says you cannot, you can have apartments, but they have to be on the upper floor. There's a reason for that. They didn't want people doing apartments on the first floor, although in Main Street, again, you'd have no room for your retailers, restaurants, service industries. So, we refined it again to say, we're comfortable with limiting it, the general office upstairs. So, then, we got down to what is office. So, is medical office office, or is a spa office? So, our ordinance is a little weak on what it defines, but it says offices of executive nature, administrative, or professional. So, in our, if you look at the way our zoning classifications are set up, the, for instance, there's four realtors, there's, I'm sorry, there's three realtors, and Daniel Bryant on the street that would not be able to fit into this present ordinance. So, Daniel Bryant is at agency. It's just office on the first floor. They're right, just as you come up to 2nd Street. We decided that anything from 2nd South to the bridge shouldn't be in this because it's already got a mixture of uses down there with the shopping center, the Pickway, and all that good stuff. Don't care about that. North, you've got the gas station and office buildings, the credit union, et cetera. Dr. Thomas, it doesn't matter. We're just talking about from University to 2nd, and these are the four businesses that would be affected. And there's a point to this. So, Blake Realty is in the building right now on Main Street, that they're just coming back to refurbish their building. They were going to add a second story to put the residential up top, and then Mr. Blake decided, yeah, I'm just going to redo the first floor, but keep my realty office there. Artera Realty is presently leasing in the space next to Greens. They purchased the whole Greens building. That's 10,000 feet. 5,000 on the first floor is going to be a live-work space, but it's professional office. Then, they're going to have the same thing upstairs. So, they're taking 10,000 feet potential, 5,000 of it already was retail with Greens, and now it's going to be office. So, they would be affected. And then, like I said, Daniel Bryant would be affected. And then Keller Williams Realty bought the bank on the corner of University and Main. Today, Mr. Crispin, who owns that building, so the bank on the west, I'm sorry, on the east, northeast side, southeast side of University and Main, he called and said, so if I lose them as a tenant, my realtor, you're telling me I can't put another office in there? It was a bank forever. These guys came in as a tenant, and we said you could have a bank again, but you couldn't have a realtor. But, there's the catch. And I talked to Vidya and Jeff about this, that the way our ordinance is written about non-conformities, if you are in the building, for instance, he has Keller Williams in there, and another realtor came in, doesn't matter. They have not given up that use group. It's still a realtor. They could go on forever. Our ordinance is, if you abandon the use for one year, then you lose your non-conformity. So, if he couldn't find a tenant of any type for a year, then when he came back in, you'd have to file the existing ordinance if this was approved. So, and the same thing with those other four spaces. So, in general, it's four spaces out of all the businesses downtown. They'd still have the right to continue what they're doing until they leave for a year. And if they leave for a year, I would assume there's a reason why that business didn't make it there, or that industry didn't. So, we like this ordinance. We're going to tighten it up. We'd like to set it for the next step, which will be a public hearing at your March meeting, and go through that process. We'll invite the public, invite the business community to come and talk if they want to about it. If they're, if the businesses feel super strong about it, we'll know about it. We've done this at the DDA meeting. They talked about it. They were okay with it at this point. So, that's basically where we're at. We're going to get a cleaned-up copy of it, and then we'll bring it for a public hearing and see what happens. So, and that would go to city council also.
Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion to have a public hearing.
Support.
Okay, support.
Just a quick question.
Yes, please.
Why a year? Why give them that long?
Yeah, that's just the way, a lot of ordinances were written a long time ago. It's always was a year non-conformity. There's some that have a little bit less, six months. My former had six months. Here, it's a year.
I was just wondering if there was a way to tighten this up, or even once that particular business left?
You'd have to rewrite the zoning ordinance, I'm sorry, the municipal code to say that. Yeah, go ahead, Vidya.
The protection for non-conformities is offered under the Michigan Zoning Act to resume a business. So, under state law typically, a one-year time frame of non-conformity, unless there is a conscious intent to abandon the use, they are protected according to state law.
So, I think, yeah, basically, you think a year, that's, a year's pretty normal. So, okay. So, again, if we could just set a public hearing, we'll have it, and we'll bring it and see what happens.
Okay. So, that'd be at the March 6th?
Correct.
Okay. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who is the second, Mr.?
Oh, man.
Mr. Mayor, then Mr. Stone.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenjuk?
Yes.
Commissioner Lord?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Secretary Sage?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hauser?
Yes, please. Okay, thank you. 6C, lighting provision draft ordinance. This is the consideration of the ordinance. Mr. City Attorney?
I will take that. Thank you. So, before you is a draft ordinance, and you have seen this and other varieties in the past. And I thought this was going to be a public hearing, but it looks like today will be the request to set it for a public hearing. A little bit of the genesis is that this body has reviewed and declined to take action on previous versions. City Council had one in the general code that they did not take action on a while ago. So, after consideration, continued consideration, city council asked, was presented, excuse me, presented with some language for consideration, and they thought it was worthy to push down to Planning Commission to consider. And that's where we are today. So, the, much of the language is continued from other versions. So, if I could just point us to subsection 4, really, the only part that had some tweaks in it were the, is in 4A, which would say that exterior lights that exceed 100 watts or the LED equivalent, spotlights and floodlights on single-family residential properties must be directed away from, or shielded away from other residential lots so that no direct light falls onto the other residential lot. so that no direct light falls onto the other residential lot. The rest of it, which is B, which is, confirms that it would be resident complaint-driven, the city's not gonna go around looking for issues, it's only gonna be looking at if there's a resident complaint. There's, 4C is a time to bring it into compliance, which we put at 30 days. Doesn't mean they have to remove the light, but they have to address the light falling onto residential lots. And that this was, in addition to, not to the exclusion of other applicable ordinances, such as nuisance ordinances. So, last time I was here, and we talked about this, which was a few months ago, we clarified this body's role in this process, I'm sorry.
Please finish, sorry, I'll go after it.
No. Okay.
I have a comment on the language.
Okay, so just, I'll finish up on the process. So last time I was here, I kind of, we went through the ordinance and clarified that this body really isn't the vote yes or no as to whether or not the, that you want this to be enacted. This is purely a decision for City Council, but our code requires this body to conduct a public hearing, and then it gets moved to City Council with Planning Commission's report. That could be no comment, it can be negative comment, it could be positive comment. But then, that information then goes up to City Council to do, then they do another public hearing, and then they make the ultimate decision whether to move forward with it or not. So I know that there was confusion, because typically this body says, "We like this, let's move an ordinance forward to City Council." And I know that there was conflicting issues with, "I don't want this to move forward." City Council does want something to go forward, so they can act either thumbs up or thumbs down. So we wanted to provide that clarification, so.
And if I may, part of the confusion was, I think Chairman McGee was on the call, he still might be, he had challenged, "Do a little bit of homework, go look at the situation that started all of this." And then he wanted 10 addresses that had lights that would violate this, and we gave him, there's every, like violates, if you can see it, so. And then the fact that everybody wasn't gonna be here in January, this guy messed up, we could've set the public hearing for tonight, and we didn't. Again, because he wanted more information for all of you to go look and gather information. Did you go look at lights? Do you have an opinion before we go ahead and set the public hearing, so?
I drove around. I looked at and walked specifically the property in question, as well as, you know, a lot of the neighborhood. There was an email from, I think it was earlier today, that I thought was incredibly helpful, and I don't think it's captured in the update to this language. So first of all, all along I've said, I don't think we should, to this extent, deal, create ordinances that deal with a single situation, but here we are. And I don't think that the change here of 100 watts, I don't know if this is like a cop-out, this doesn't address anything, because, and maybe shielding does, but then you're, if you're talking about shielding, I think you're talking about the instances where it's like a floodlight or something that's pushing light across driveways, not just an open bulb on a fixture, because 90% of the lights across the city on residential homes are unshielded. They're open, they're like the, you know, glass-style fixture, metal and glass, that's what we have. And so, really the only thing here that's a limiting factor, besides the candle foot measurement, is 100 watts. The gentleman across the street from the neighbor here says his fixture is rated for a max of 60 watts, and he uses a 40-watt bulb, and it's still a problem. I actually think that the two on the garage that are closest to the home are warmer lights, and they're less, you know, they're probably less visible than the one that's on the side of the garage, that's even further away, I'm guessing it's a cooler light bulb. The email from one of our residents from earlier today, this woman Susan, she's a, she's part of the Dark Skies Initiative, and a chapter of the International Dark Sky Association. She sent in some, I thought, really good information on CTC, which is the coloring of the light, and I think if we are gonna address something, then the ordinance should capture that versus just watts. Because I think, as written, watts, this does absolutely zero, I don't know why that we're even discussing it, if we're gonna write what's in here, because I just don't think it makes a difference.
And I would say, in defense of the resident that's brought all this up, the only way to solve this is say, "You're putting a shield, so I can't see the light source." It can be a 10-watt, and that would bother the situation. So, it's either shielded or don't. That means every light bulb in the city that's from the street, face the, or your side door, or anything, if it's a complaint, it's gotta be shielded, and you gotta go through this process. So, that's an enormous amount of work for us. I don't know how we could ever do that. I don't know if that stands up a court or not, but that's the only way to fix this problem. It's not about intensity or color, doesn't matter. If you can, the complaint is, "I can see it in my house." You can see everything in your house, so it's.
So, and we've gone over this ad nauseam, it's late, and I wanna give it equal time, and I wanna make sure it's addressed, but the email that we received today with the photographs, with the light bulbs, is very telling to me. And I think it's conclusive that it's not a wattage issue, it's a plating issue, frankly. It's the way that these houses are lined up, and there's nothing absent putting a shield there, it's a binary, it's either, you see the light or you don't. It doesn't matter. This is a 40-watt bulb, which is a 450 lumen, which is at the very bottom of the scale. It's a desk lamp. And so, I get it, I just, I don't know if we have to move this forward to a public hearing, if that's a, if it's a mandate, then okay, fine, but I, you know, in the interest of full disclosure, I'm not in favor of this ordinance, I haven't been, and particularly after receiving this email today, what was already a very waning, you know, willingness to participate in this is pretty much at a zero. Anyone else?
I have some comments.
Please.
So I don't remember when we put the 100 watt in there, was it during one of the discussions at council? I don't know, there's been so many discussions on this. I don't know, does that also conflict with the one foot candle?
Those are, in fact, I don't know if you want me to jump in, but those are completely different issues, the foot candle, because the foot candle issue, that remains regardless of what you do on this ordinance. So, it has to be a twofold process for this light, the foot candle, and then this issue. So, I can say that the 100 watt was put in one of the earlier versions, that's carried through. I know we talked about, at one point, having spotlights and floodlights, if they were on a timer, they had to be a timer or not. I mean, this is, as you know, I've been through a lot. So, I would say that the 100 watt, I mean, it's been probably in place for, or part of the version, for nine months, a year, maybe. So, this is not magical language.
Right.
This was trying to address the request of the boards.
So we're only saying to shield fixtures in excess of 100 watts?
Correct, or floodlights, or spotlights, yes.
So it does nothing to address the issue that's been presented?
Right.
So, I guess I would also implore my colleagues here, we gotta quit saying that this is a singular issue, because that, that's somewhat discriminatory, because you're basically just calling one resident out. I don't think we wanna do that.
See, we haven't had any other complaints.
Okay, again, again, as an elected official, I don't do that, and I would not.
I was directly asked of staff, "How many complaints have we had?" So we answered. We're not saying it's right or wrong, we're just answering the question.
Okay, so, my final point here is, in one part of this ordinance, we claim a commercial property is a neighbor, right? So that neighbor, to be a good neighbor, must not allow its light source to project on its other neighbor's property. But yet, on a residential-to-residential statement, we don't consider that, right?
That's true.
You're just neighbors, you're supposed to be good neighbors. Well, good neighbor theory is not law, anywhere. So, good neighbor theory works until it doesn't. So, I would like to see something in the ordinance that allows for the protection of everybody as a neighbor. If you're telling me that a commercial property is a neighbor, and we give specific guidelines to that neighbor, we can do something similar on a residential-to-residential basis.
Aside from shielding every single residential light bulb that's outside, and pointing it only at the ground, I don't see how you can change anything to address any.
Then let's take the commercial one away, seriously.
We had, we had many residents that came with complaints, who had tried to address it with the building. There were probably at least 10 people here that had brought that up. And those lights were much, much higher.
Okay.
They were not, they were not just lighting your front porch, they were lighting an entire parking lot. So the scale of those, I think, was significantly more than these lights. There were people that were a couple hundred yards away, that when we saw the photos were, you know, their entire bedrooms were fully lit up, not just the fact that they could see a bulb in the distance.
So, do you wanna, or, yeah.
Richard, do you want?
Well, I was just, I know it's getting late. It sounds like we need to have a public hearing, so I'd like to make a motion that we have a public hearing.
Okay, that's fine. As it is presented, I mean, Mr. Sage has thrown out to get rid of, to change the language.
The watts thing, I don't.
As presented, I'm supportive, because it doesn't actually do anything. So, that's my point of like, you put something in front of us that really doesn't accomplish. The only thing it would do is a true spotlight, a floodlight, but that's not 90% of the lights in the city.
I guess I would ask the chief, you know, based on, I don't know if you saw the email today.
Oh, yes, I did.
Okay, based on what you saw today in the email, and presuming this ordinance was put into effect, would it have any bearing whatsoever on the issue that Ms. Kane has presented to us?
Just a point, according to Wikipedia, to replace a 100-watt incandescent light bulb, look for a bulb that gives you about 1,600 lumens. If you want something dimmer, go for fewer lumens. So maybe a suggestion would be 100 watts or 1,600 lumens, if you wanted to fit lumens into it.
And this bulb says 450 lumens.
I have the documentation.
Yeah, I just, okay.
It's getting late.
Yeah, I think that.
So, to answer.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, and I appreciate everyone's saying, but I'm also sensitive at the time. So if we just wanna move this to a public hearing and then have this discussion at that time?
No, I'm not gonna say, I'm not saying that you can't speak, but, go ahead, what's that, Mr.?
Okay, that's, I have no problem with that, I have no problem. Okay, chief, could you?
Well, can I?
No, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I was just gonna say, you're right, differently is what you're saying?
No, no, I was asking, do you want me to? Because I've heard, I've heard a couple of different comments thrown out. Do you wanna change, remove the 100 watts? Mr. Sage has thrown out the idea of making it the same language as commercial, or getting rid of the commercials. I just wanna make sure, what do you wanna come back as for the formal, as for the public hearing?
Just in my opinion, I kind of agree with Mr. Sage, Councilmember Sage is, it does seem hypocritical. How do you do want, now, at the same time, I don't wanna open Pandora's box, I mean, I don't know how to fix that, but, yeah, how can Great Oaks apartments?
We would punish 90% of the residents in the city, and potentially, somebody could go around, identify all the addresses and turn it in, and you could have 90% of the residents that have to shield the light fixture on their front porch, or on their garage, that might have a 450 lumen bulb, which is a desk lamp.
And I understand, I don't wanna do that, and I've heard the chief, you know, we gotta have something that we can afford, so. But it does seem like, you know, if you happen to be next to Great Oaks, and they're shining a light, well, you get that stopped, and if somebody else is shining a light, it's not in Great Oaks, it's a house, you can't get that stopped.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would add that, in the case of Great Oaks, and where we have found those, those lights have been more in violation than just being able to see them. They were spotlights that weren't properly directed, they were wall pack lights that were replaced, and with improper lights, and so there were more than just the.
Okay, well, maybe that's something that, put in the ordinance, is that it has to be that, that, and that, not just the light, you know. I'm making policy up as we speak, which is not the proper way to do it.
Richard?
I have several issues, and maybe because I'm the news person here, I don't have all the background and history that everybody else does, and maybe that's a good thing, with a fresh set of eyes, at least I like to think that. But, first of all, wattage is irrelevant here. In fact, that is going away, if you will. Coincidentally, over the last couple of weeks, I had to go to Home Depot to buy some light bulbs, and I talked to the person there, and interestingly enough, they told me that, first of all, it's very difficult to find an incandescent bulb at all. In fact, the only thing that they had was a refrigerator light and a candelabra or a chandelier. Everything else was CFL or LED. And even having said that, they are phasing out CFLs, so that your only choice is gonna be an LED in the near future. Now, having said that, I went by the gentleman's house at least a half a dozen times since we last talked about this, and I gotta say, every time I went by, the lights were off. So, not knowing what I was looking at, I went by the, went there during the day to see the two lantern-style type lights. And I've got some concerns in the sense that you take a look at those lights, whether, you know, on his home, or you start taking a look at other parts of the city, I'll use my house as an example. I moved in 20 years ago. I've got nice lights on the front of the house, on the porch, I've got nice lights on the side. My wife, you know, picked them out, you know, I could've been, you know, really happy with something rather simple. But I can tell you right now, there's no way I can shield my lights, because they don't make a shield for them, okay? I can't put in an incandescent light bulb, because they don't make an incandescent light bulb. I have to buy an LED light. So, the only way I can fix this problem, if somebody complained, is to take my lights off and put something new up, which I personally think is a very, very bad solution, and I think it's gonna cause a whole lot of issues for the city, okay? That's one part. In this ordinance itself, you know, it talks about a resident complaint. What resident are we talking about? A resident of Rochester? Well, I live on the east side of town. Does that give me the right to complain about somebody that lives on the far west and vice versa? Does it give somebody who lives in Rochester Hills the right to come into our neighborhood and say, "Well, I'm part of this, you know, dark sky coalition, and I'm gonna file a complaint against everybody," okay? That, I think, is a major issue. You know, then you think about different applications of light. A number of people have sensor-type lights for security purposes, where if somebody walks, you know, up the driveway, and on the garage, all of a sudden they get hit with a big flood, flood, flood light, that's gonna be very, very bright. Do we suddenly outlaw all of those? You know, is there an element of time, going back to the gentleman in the back? I don't know if, you know, obviously there was proof, because pictures were supplied, saying that these lights were on, but without asking the man, does he leave his lights on only when he goes to and from the garage? Does he put them on a certain time during the day? You know, what's acceptable, what's not? Does it mean we're gonna say you can't turn your lights on at all? You know, if you don't have shields, or you don't have the proper brightness, or what have you? I just think that the way this is written, it's unenforceable, you know, it's just simply unenforceable. And to come back to the comment about commercial, I do believe there's a lot of differences here, because as was mentioned, most of your commercial lights are gonna sit high in the sky, much higher than what's gonna be on my porch or on my garage. And then beyond that, they do make, you know, commercial lights that have shields, so a solution or a substitution is gonna be a lot easier than somebody that owns a residential property. So, I do think, you know, there are some differences here, but the way this is written and the road we're going down, this is, it's unenforceable, in my opinion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Because I'm the one who dropped the ball on this and didn't post the public hearing, I went back and reviewed all this stuff, and we're kinda having that same conversation tonight, which is, you know, how do we regulate it and so forth? I guess, you know, the motion that was made was to set the public hearing. that was made was to set the public hearing to review the existing ordinance that's in place, and talk about what some of the potential changes could be, and then forward that with a recommendation to the council. And that's how I read into the motion that was made back in December.
Okay. And I have a motion on, so I have a motion on the floor. It hasn't been-
Can you restate the motion?
I will support it.
Yeah.
And what was it? Set it for public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. We have motion for set it for public hearing, support.
And I guess it's with the, with what's there now, I guess, right?
Understood. Thank you.
And then we'll discuss it.
And just procedure, if this moves on to city council, city council could change the language, too. So just know that, that that's, and just so I understand, we'll set it for public hearing, it will come back to us in, what, March? Yes, yes. Okay, so in March, we'll have the public hearing. So members of the audience in March, you will come back. If you want to address this issue, talk about it. We'll have a discussion, then we will say whether we recommend it or don't recommend it up to city council. And then they can do what they want, but they will have our up or down.
Exactly.
Okay.
Do other cities similar to ours, Birmingham, Royal Oak, Plymouth, have anything similar to this?
There's, similar to our commercial, I would say yes. In fact, when I, I remember when I was looking at it, the one go-round, I said, oh, I'm like, oh, Rochester Hills has this exact language of requiring shielding and so forth. And then I saw it says, "Does not apply to residential." So even, so it's, I would say Rochester Hills, at least that, when I looked at it maybe a year ago, was very similar to what we have on our books. So it wasn't a absolutely have to shield from a residential.
Right. So nothing's changed in the last year or two that we've been talking about this.
I'll double check between, so, just to follow, I checked it. Birmingham, Auburn Hills, Rochester Hills do not have residential-to-residential issues like this. Go ahead.
I was just going to point out, the other resident that sent an email on this, I think it was today, Susan Shaken, who is part of the International Dark Sky Association, she did say that the city, or Rochester Hills, had, I believe, updated theirs. Now they focused on lumen as well as the correlated color temperature. Oh, I believe that what she called out was 450 lumens at a warm color temperature, which is 3,000 K. I do want to note that the complaint that we received, the lightbulb is 450 lumens, and I believe it said 2,700 K, which is even warmer than the recommended 3,000 by the Dark Sky Association. So I think that this gentleman here, I forgot that address, but that's where I struggle, is I don't know more, what more you can do. He has a warm bulb at the lowest lumen.
Right. With the frosted fixture.
With a frosted fixture. So beyond that, the only thing is, you put a piece of metal over it, and the light only points at the ground.
Or you unplug it.
Or you unplug it. And that's where I do not support unresidential 100% shielding, or outlaw using lights. So.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Lord?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenjuk? Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
Secretary Sage?
Yes.
That'll be at the March hearing, correct? Or March meeting, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Okay. I believe that's it for agenda items. Now let's go to, well, now we've got Ms. Slanis.
Yeah. So, I'll try, I will try to make this quick, so there's four things. So, number one, we need to have second meetings again, starting as soon as you all can get here, because we're never going to get to this master plan-
Right.
If we don't do that. And we talked to Mr. Jackson, Vidya's team, and they're like, you can take them in the groups, the two or the threes. We need to start grinding the twos, because it's not helping us. So we would ask that you would make a motion to have a second meeting. You can make it every month of the year, and then cancel them if you want. Or if you just know for summer, you don't want to do it, or February, you don't, but we need to keep this going. We're not going to get everybody, we think, but we'd like to get almost all of you, because I still have to go to city council with these. So if we keep stalling, we're never going to get there. So, quick, if you guys would like it, we were doing the third Thursday of every month. We were doing, I think we started before it was March, March, April, May, June, took off July, August, September, then October, November.
It's next Thursday.
Yeah. Yeah, Thursday, November, I think we ended up canceling because of Thanksgiving. But we would do it as-
Starting in this month.
Yeah, starting in March. Or we would start in this month if you want to, but-
How long would it take to go through all these ordinances?
If we could do each set of three in one meeting, it's impossible. It would still take five months. So it's going to still take 10 months, probably, that time we're done. So, and again, if we have light, regular agendas, we'll put them on. It's not like we wouldn't do that, but we know, look, it's coming up here. You're going to get jammed on every meeting. So it'd help us to be able to get these through. If we could do it starting in March, March, April, May, at least, and then see where we're at from there. We can always set one at any meeting. We can set the next month as a special meeting. So I don't know how you feel about that. And if you don't want to, understand, it's just going to take longer.
It's fine.
I make, you need a motion?
Yes.
Or just make a motion to have a special meeting for March, April, May, and June, and reevaluate after that?
That's fine.
On the third Thursday of the month.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm trying to find a blank list here. Okay. I'm sorry. So the motion was by King, seconded by?
The mayor.
Mayor? Okay.
Third Thursday every month.
Okay. Commissioner King?
Yes.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
Secretary Sage?
Yes.
Commissioner Lord?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenjuk?
Yes.
And Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Thank you. Second one was at the meeting, the joint meeting, and thank you very much for that. It was extremely productive for staff, and I think for planning commission and city council, and people that were watching it. We've been playing it. And we talked about the PICA problem we're having. And we went from the whole city, Patrick's dealt with many communities, that the whole city is basically a special project. It seems too wonky to us. We just want a tweak to say something like, in the plan, in the ordinance it says, it refers to, you have to go to the master plan map to find if you're in a potential intensity change area, special project area. We want to give you two different options. To amend existing districts, the planning commission have the right to extend that line. Flat-out reason why. On Mosher's property, it's wrong. We didn't, we cut their property in half. We could just, the simplest thing to do is just move that around the property line, and we're done. We don't want you to make up, this staff person doesn't want you to have the right to make up Picas all over, because we're going to get in trouble with the people saying you're just trying to cut deals. This is just simply for minor modifications, that we can write that you can amend a, a district, you can amend a special project area if it's adjacent to an existing district now. Not make a new one, not make Soleronics a new one. That puts too much pressure on everybody. That's what the master plan would have done if it thought it should have done. So I'm going to bring that to you at the March meeting. And it'll be clear, and we'll set a public hearing March for April, take it to city council. I just wanted to give you an update on that. So we're not going to go for the whole cities of PICA. I think that's unfair to you guys.
Is it almost like a Scrivener's error-type situation?
Technically, it is.
Jeff?
That was one of the words we used for the, but then it turned into, so it could just be just that, but-
Or it could be more.
But it was, Nick is talking about is a little further, which is, if we, if you want to nudge the existing boundary line to a property that's adjacent to it, that's what he's referring to.
And it's up to you to decide, how much do you want to have latitude, and the ordinance allow you guys to make, to move those boundaries.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So that's our last. So, again, all due respect to Vidya, we ran into on these facade change requests. So Spartan Inn and Greens. She's given them very, they've met with the developers. She's given them clear direction. They don't always agree to what she's asking for. A full site plan, "I'm just changing my windows. Why do I need a site plan?" So what I'd like to do on those two, they've been in for months. It's embarrassing. They're getting pissed off right now. So I would ask you tonight, if you'd make a motion to set a public hearing for Greens and for Spartan Inn. We'll give it, Vidya will get a full review. If she doesn't like a couple of things on it, that's fine. We'll write the report if we have to. Just, they're just facades. And we want to make sure that we get them off these books, because at some point, we're holding them off. And if they don't want to put dumpster enclosure, and you say, "Put it in," or I'm going to not approve it, that's fine, but we can't make them do these things. Vidya can't make them do it. All she can do is refer to it. And following direction from chairman, if there's three items on there, she's not going to recommend to even set it for public hearing. I understand that, but some of these are just, are, we think we should set the public hearing. So I would ask for a public hearing. Go ahead, Vidya.
Nick, just a small clarification, please. I did receive the plan of Greens. I will be reviewing it in the next couple of days, and it probably will be ready for planning commission's next meeting. I just haven't had the chance to look at it yet.
Yeah, that's fine. So I would like to just, instead of waiting 60 days to get this done, set it tonight for public hearing, because it's going to be ready. She'll be ready by then. We'll have the public hearing, and we can take action that night. So it'd be for Greens in downtown here. So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please. So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That could be at either of the March meetings, or are we just going to?
No, first meeting in March. Thank you. First meeting in March, the regular meeting in March.
So we're doing, not what Vidya wants?
No. She said she could be ready, but we would have to wait for her to be ready for, in March, to set up for April. And two things. Greens, we didn't send them the report three months ago. It got messed up. So he's like, "I turned mine in. Where is it?" And we can't make them wait four months to get a public hearing set. So we're just, both of them are the same. So-
So next available.
We're not doing that with Vidya wants, but show, show up three weeks to review it now before the March meeting. But if we wait till March, then it's six more weeks before we can get it here.
You good?
Yeah. I think there was a motion, right? And a roll call?
Who seconded that?
Support.
Mr. Stone? Okay. Commissioner Lord?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenjuk?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Secretary Sage?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
Thank you so much. All right, lastly, just the rest, the rest of the things on our project report here. The Granary can't come until the PICA lines move. They can't. It doesn't work. So we're, they're waiting for us, and we'll just go with that. The Preservers, Patrick's met with them. That's the old cement plant. They're just about ready to submit their site plan package. That'll go through the normal process at the first meeting of each month. We just talked about Greens. The dumpster enclosure ordinance, it was suggested that Vidya's 100% right. The ordinance says block. We don't always want block, so we want to have latitude in that ordinance to allow other uses as the planning commission sees fit. So we'll bring that to you in March also. Brown Iron Brewery, it's the saddest story. The owner of that property got a purchase agreement to buy the building and the parking lot. The title company says, Oakland County says, "You don't own the parking lot, and you own part of the street." It's the wor- and they're, the title company's like, "Until someone tells me at Oakland County, this legal description that the county has is wrong, we're not going to let you move forward." So they are desperately trying to get the attorneys to work with Oakland County to straighten this legal description. I found in 1998, in 2006, this planning commission approved drawings for the exact thing she thought she was buying. Yet the county's got it, that the bank owns half their parking. It's the biggest mess. We've called the county, like, "Get somebody else to submit it. We can't change a legal description." So that's why she's not here tonight. She would be ready to go. She met with Vidya and Patrick, ready to go, but we can't till they work out who owns what piece of property. So that's why that's not here.
Okay.
And that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay. We sure there's anything? Nope? Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks.